All right. All right, let's call this meeting to order. Welcome, everybody, to tonight's study session. For the record, all members of council are here except councillor or Deputy Mayor Galvan, who has requested an excused absence. And for staff, all members are here. Ms. Abel is
Mr. Mayor.
But is participating in the meeting this evening.
Oh, Deputy Mayor is on.
I'm on Zoom. Yeah, I'm on Zoom.
Oh, okay. Well, I'm glad you're here. Thank you. I will edit that. Cool. All right. So glad everybody's here. First order is, hang on a second, I gotta take some notes. All right, first order is public comment. We didn't have anybody sign up for public comment this evening. Is there somebody in the audience who wishes to make public comment? If so, please approach the microphone, state your name, city of residence, and make your comments. You'll have three minutes. All right, judging by the rush, we're not having public comments this evening. All right, active agenda. Climate resilience advisory team. In our last meeting, we made committee and subcommittee assignments, and climate resilience advisory team was not one of those that was included. It was an oversight, and so we want to correct that this evening. And so councillor Hart was on the climate resilience advisory team last year, and I know she would like to continue. Is there another council member who would eagerly like to take her place, or are we all okay with Ms. Hart continuing?
I'm fine.
I'm fine.
All right, no objection. Ms. Hart will continue on the climate resilience advisory team. Thank you for being willing to do that, Ms. Hart. All right, item B, 2024 final voucher approval. Remember, we pulled some voucher items in the last meeting, and so tried to get those all approved. Approved claim vouchers numbers 110980 through 111083 and wire transfers as listed for $1,449,390.48 for the period ending on December 31, 2024. And we have some voided checks there, number 110984, 111068, and 111081. Are there any questions on this item?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I have a few.
Okay, go ahead, sir.
18241, 18268, 18279, 18294.
Right. And Ms. Zabel is on. Are you able to answer the questions on those? Or do you want to explain a little bit, Mr. Deputy Mayor, what the questions are on those?
Yeah, the first one, 18241 Enterprise Trust. I see 11 vehicles, one being the pool, a pool vehicle, $621.38, I guess, a month.
So, yes, council, we do have one pool vehicle that is used by city staff. It's the intent was for the city hall staff to be able to have a vehicle to go to the bank or conferences. Public Works Director Sanchez and myself have been working on reorganizing some of those vehicles. I think we've reported to you at our last meeting that we're working on some of the older lease vehicles that we have on getting those moved out. And this this pool vehicle will be one that will be replacing one of those older vehicles because it is not being used by staff.
Okay, does that answer the question on that one, sir? Deputy Mayor, are you able to hear me?
Hold on, I can hear you now.
Okay. Was she able to answer your question on that one?
Yeah, she was. If Ms. Abel, if you could, once you guys go through the list, if you could, I guess, send us a list of vehicles that we do have for the enterprise, you know, on the enterprise trust, I would much appreciate that.
Yes, okay, we can do that.
Also, the next one, 18268, it's a repair for the vector truck. Is this the one that was talked about earlier in the year where there was some major repairs to it? Is this the same one, or is this a different one?
I will have to defer to Director Sanchez on that.
And yes, it is the same vehicle that needed some engine repair. So this was done to the vector truck that had some engine work on it with a diesel mechanic.
But this was separate from, I think, something had froze on it last year. It's a separate one from that?
Yeah, that is separate. That was that was other components within the water system. This had to do with engine work that was scheduled to be done at the, yeah, at the beginning of this year.
And off the top of your head, do you know if, you know, $25,000 was there for a complete overhaul on the engine?
No, that was for the, it wasn't a complete overhaul, but it was an engine work. They had to take the heads off, get them all worked, replace some parts. The Empire was the the best price that we could get for that. Some of the other diesel mechanics here here in town were a little higher, or they could not get the parts that we needed. They just their schedule was too much. And then it really couldn't take the chance of driving it out of town, like the Yakima Tri-Cities, just because it probably would have got worse driving it the way it was leaking the 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 oil that it was leaking from the side of the block.
Okay. Is there a way to email us a copy of that invoice, if you could?
Yeah, yeah, I can do that.
Okay, and the next one, 18279, a panic switch for City Hall. Do we know when that was installed or with, I mean, my understanding that this panic switch was already in place when the previous city manager was there. Is this for a different panic switch, or is this for the same one?
What was the number that you had said on that?
18279.
That that's for another, that's for, it's highlighted up on the screen. That's for, that's for a move out of someone's property that was sold, it looks like, for refunded utilities.
Oh. Maybe I wrote it down wrong in my notes.
Oh, this one.
Okay.
Let me, I can, I can probably answer this one.
Uh huh.
So, guarding security, there is different panic switches in different parts of some of the office areas. There's one in planning, and there's there's a couple at the front desk. So there was one that was creating false alarms, and guarding came out and took a look at this and see why why it was doing that. So that was for some repairs.
Okay, I see. Thank you. And then the final one is 18294, about $3,981 for professional services for a water break repair. Do we know why we outsources, why we outsource this repair?
I'd have to see on this one which one it was, Murphy Brothers, and get a date on that one. I can email you that one, too.
Yeah, if you could, and I wish I would have had more time, you know, over here in my vacation, I'd email you guys ahead of time, but it was last minute that I went through these. It was just, you know, well, my understanding was we, we as a city have all the equipment to do the these types of repairs. But yeah, we could definitely get that over to us. And and I guess I would like an explanation as to why we weren't able to do these repairs.
So one of the things that I, and I'm not saying that that's what it was for, but we do have some of the equipment. The only thing that we don't do, and is if it gets over four feet, we don't have a certified shoring box, which sometimes that's what will contract it out just because of the safety and not having a shoring box that goes in the trench. If they're four feet or under, then our personnel will get into the ditch and do it. But if it's beyond that, sometimes that's the reason why we would contract it out.
Okay, sounds good. Thank you, Raul.
All right, sir, does that answer all your questions?
Yes, it does.
All right, councillors, any other questions on this item?
If I may say something, council, just as a reminder that any invoice that is not included on tonight's register will be considered not approved and then would have to be on the 2025 budget. This is our last expenditures and approval process for the 2024 budget.
All right, thank you. Right, if there's no further questions on this item, what is the desire of council on this item?
Move to approve.
Second.
All right, motion by councillor Ripley, second by councillor Hart to approve the 2024 final voucher approval. Is there debate on this item?
I do have one quick question. Do we expect any more such vouchers? Or invoices?
No, not for, not for 2024. This will be the last time we can pay vouchers for 2024.
Thank you.
All right. Then, hearing no more discussion or debate, all in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no.
Aye.
I two vote aye, motion passes. Thank you. Item C, rescinding ordinance 2022-03, adopting ordinance, rescinding ordinance number 2022-03 regarding the appointment of Judge Troy Lee affixing the compensation as municipal court judge and judges pro tempore and authorizing entry into a professional services contract. Mr. City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll lean on Ben a little bit, and Debbie have been working on the contract with Judge Lee. So the Cliff Notes version in our ordinance was baked in that he had hiring and firing authority, and essentially that power lies within the city manager's office. So just needed to alter this for our city code and then bake that back into the code. So it's sort of an unraveling, then a reinstituting. So just sort of a procedural thing that we'll have to do, doesn't fundamentally change Judge Lee's duties as a judge, but the hiring and firing authority does lie within the city manager's office. So Ben, hopefully I didn't steal your thunder on that. I'm hopefully a good student, and chime in what you will.
The other part of this, too, is to make sure he identifies an independent contract.
Right.
As opposed to a city employee because of the separation of powers necessary for the office.
Okay. And Ms. Zabel, did you want to weigh in on this as well?
The only thing I would add is that the the term of the contract does not change. Everything stays the same, except it's just delineated between a contractor versus a part-time employee.
Okay, council members, questions or comments?
So basically, this cleans up the language and makes it very clear that he's, it's a contract, independent contract as opposed to an employee. Is that correct? So it's very, makes the wording very clear.
Yes. And then we also, because it was originally done with an ordinance, we need to do another ordinance to rescind that, and then we would be doing a resolution to to authorize the city manager to sign the contract from this point forward. So we don't have to do an ordinance anymore, or just make it easier to do a resolution.
Okay.
Okay, Mr. Beeler, I think you had a question?
Yes, is this the only employee we have that we're going to be doing this with, just for the judicial system?
Yes, because this is the only, this is the only person that we have that was, is a consultant that was also being considered an employee.
Thank you.
You either are an employee or you aren't a consultant. You can't be both.
Okay, further questions or comments?
No, thank you.
Hearing none, what's the desire of council on this item?
Move to approve.
Second.
All right, motion by councillor Beeler, second by councillor Hart to adopt an ordinance, rescinding ordinance number 2022-03 regarding the appointment of Judge Troy Lee affixing the compensation as municipal court judge and judges pro tempore and authorizing entry into a professional services contract. Is there debate on this item? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
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 Oppose, no. I two vote aye, motion passes. Item D, I believe this is the second part, Judge Troy Lee Independent Consultant Agreement to Approve a Resolution Authorizing the City Manager to Amend an Agreement Between Judge Troy Lee and the City of Sunnyside as an Independent Consultant and Set the Amount to be Paid to Judge Pro Tempore. Mr. City Manager.
And as Debbie mentioned, this is really a continuation of the process, so the rescinding and then instituting the resolution. And so we can essentially get our code where we need to get it. And then, as Debbie stated, he's essentially an independent contractor, because you can't intermix the two. So so basically, where we're at now is getting us to where we need to be.
Okay, council questions?
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
So would we have to pay overtime now that he's per hour?
Deputy Mayor, no, we would not have to.
So he would still be on call for, say, warrants needed?
Yes, yes, he gets a monthly, he gets a monthly rate.
Okay. And then the $65 per hour, I see that it's it's for, it was, it's going back to January 1, 2022, and each January, it would, you know, it would adjust or, you know, reflect for cost of living. What's that per hour for 2025?
So he, so there in this resolution, it continues to include the the costs for the mayor pro temps. So the resolution includes, so the same language that it had in the ordinance for the judge, which is he gets a monthly salary for being the judge, and it's based on the Administrative Office of the Court's salary commission for judges. And then the resolution also includes the dollar amount that will be paid hourly to the mayor pro temps.
Judge pro temp.
Thank you for a judge pro temp, when, if the mayor is unable to attend the the court, we have a judge pro temp that comes in, and they get paid that hourly rate.
If the judge isn't able, not the mayor, correct?
If the judge is not able to appear, correct?
But then that rate is for 2022, and it says on there that it would be adjusted annually. Do we know what that adjustment rate is now?
I'm so sorry. I'm sorry. No, no, I don't know what that amount is, but I would be more than happy to get that amount for you.
Further questions?
Yeah, I have another follow up.
Go ahead, sir.
So it shows $65, you know, per hour for 2022. I'm just concerned how much it's jumping every year, and, you know, how much it's going to affect our budget for 2025.
Well, I would, I would just make the assumption that it's probably going up 5% per year. So since that was done in 2022, it's gone up 5% each year, and it's, we'll go up another 5%, if that's the number that we would be using for 2025.
Okay.
And if in my, in the conversations that I had with the judge, I don't, I don't believe there's, there's been, you know, more than a handful of times that the judge has not been present, and we've had a mayor, a judge pro temp come in and cover for him.
Okay.
All right, further questions? Hearing none, what is the desire of council on this item?
Move to approve.
A second.
All right, we've got a motion by councillor Beeler, second by councillor Ripley to approve a resolution authorizing the city manager to amend an agreement between Judge Troy Lee and the City of Sunnyside as an independent consultant and set the amount to be paid to Judge Pro Tempore. Debate on this item? Hearing none, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Oppose, no. I two vote aye, motion passes. All right. Now for the, for the real study session. Pool and Community Center, receive a presentation regarding Community Center and Pool. Mr. City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor. So Raul Sanchez has been working on a presentation and pouring through some numbers and is going to go through a couple of presentations, one on the pool, the other on the community center. Certainly, there's been a lot of conversation about both of these assets of ours. So one thing that I've been doing on my own along with Raul is looking at some long-term options with some short-term options and and working with Debbie on on some of the costs. So we can talk about that a little bit, but I'll turn it over to Raul, Mayor, to Raul with what he's come up with for the council.
Mr. Sanchez.
Thank you. So on this presentation here, we're going to start out first with the Sunnyside Pool. And the first, yeah, we'll go to the next slide there. So first of all, I started out just to kind of give you a layout of what we're obviously with this is because we don't have the staff that we had before to run the pool like we did from the rec department. So the way we're going to structure it for for this year is the deputy public works director will be the the main point of contact. And then from there, we have the pool manager, the pool assistant manager, and then the lifeguards. That'll be the person that will be overseeing this. Next slide. One of the, these are some of the the expenses for Radoff is the the trainer. So this is what it what it cost last year to, that we paid for the lifeguard trainer, which we would have to, depending on the decision, we would have to let there, let her know by the end of this month so that she can schedule, already have the city in mind for for the training. The lifeguards pay for their own lifeguard certification, and then we would need to let her know by the end of January. Next slide. This shows the number of employees that we had in '23 and '24. We had a city supervisor, then the pool manager, pool assistant, there was three, and then lifeguards. We have 18 lifeguards that we need for the season. Next slide. These are the hours of operation for the pool. Everything from just the season to open swim hours, lap swimming, family, some of the admission that was from last year. Obviously, that'll be updated according to the fee schedule for 2025. These were some of the costs that we have incurred in the past. So this shows you what the department had to oversee the pool. This just for the, you know, we took their wages and broke it down to what it is for the season. So that's what it would come down to. We also have the parks facility employee that oversees pool maintenance, and then the supervisor and that second employee. This is for, you know, coming in, checking the chemicals, doing any cleaning, doing weekend checks, adjusting things. And then that's their combined annual for the season. Then we also have the seasonal employees. That's a one pool manager, three assistant pool managers, and the 18 lifeguards, their hours, and what it would cost for the season and seasonal employees, $122,760.48. We also have the cost of the chemicals for the season. And that is the startup chemicals, which is right there, calcium chloride, sunscreen granular, and daily chemicals, which is $17,069.88 for chemicals for the season.
And Mayor, if I may, Raul, one of the topics of discussion with the swim team, we've exchanged some emails, and I've seen some posts on social media sort of disputing, because we've said, you know, throughout this process that it's about, you know, roughly 400,000 to run the pool. It's around 380,000. When we talked offline before this presentation, you had mentioned to me that we buffer some for capital cost, or, you know, just emergency situations. So can you talk about that 177,000 cost and why it is not more than that? And what else we have to budget for the pool to make sure that it's running cohesively? Because somebody's going to look at this and say, I told you so, my God, it's not 400,000, which I'm not disputing that. I hope it's nothing to run the pool, but can you explain some of the numbers a little bit?
So, yeah, this is so far just what on this slide is showing that, but it's still not showing the rest of the expenses. This is just an employee wages and some of the chemicals. Some of the things will go to the next slide, and it'll it'll give you the other expenses. So here's the, the department had to oversee the pool. Well, and and then, so one was in '23, and one is in '24. I use '23 because in '24, the pool wasn't accurate on the on the dollars because it was down for two weeks. We had a late start. So we actually, the, 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 we didn't spend as much in '24 because we weren't, we were down for two weeks. So that saved us in the expense for lifeguards and and chemicals and things like that. So so you can see there the the difference between the two, but this is here for 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 24. Same thing, other than '23 and '24. But again, one of them was more because of those two weeks that we were down, and that's why I didn't want to use '24 as what we, because that is not really representing a full summer season. So if we go to the next slide. So this, now we have another, the office and operating supplies, which now, and it has a breakdown there of all the other expenses that we also have, which is the employee benefits, the unemployment compensation that comes out of their office and operating supplies as far as paper and janitorial things and things that we just need to to run on a daily basis. We have the communication stuff, IT services, phones, tax and operating assessments is what we also comes out of there is also what we pay to Department of Health for the the pool permit. We have insurance. We have utility services, that is electricity, natural gas, water. So we have repairs and maintenance, and then obviously some miscellaneous things that that also come out of there for a few things. So all that together comes out to $90,0950. Then we also have repairs and maintenance. That is just a budget in case something does go wrong. If we need to call an attrition to look at something through the season, if something, a pump or something just needs some sort of a maintenance, we need to have some money set aside to take care of that. The other 55,000 there is the equipment repair that I had mentioned before that we need to repair if we're going to open it, which is the chlorine injector pump and some filters. There's 32 filters, the chlorine injector pump, and then the vacuum pump hoses. That altogether comes out to about $55,000 in order to repair that. So those overall costs come out to 180,950. So when we go to the next slide, you can see the cost is 358,881.74. The revenue that came in in '24 was 67,315.56. So.
Is that the revenue of '04 or '24?
That is for '24, the revenue that came in.
That's why you're down for, so how come you didn't use '23 for that one?
True.
Do you have that number?
I don't have it with me off the top of my head. That would have been like two more weeks worth of revenue. That, yeah.
I happen to have '23 revenue.
Oh, okay.
So, yes, yes. So '23's revenue, and this includes the lifeguard classes, was 57,500. And 2022 was 60. Sorry?
Would you repeat that number, please?
Yeah, so '23 is 57,500. I have 2022, and that was 66,468. And then I also have '21, and that was 48,347.
Question?
Do you have a question backing up?
Did you have a question, Mr. Beeler?
Where's the concession in here? Or is that not run by the city?
I didn't have those numbers to get, but it is, but where it goes into in the in the general fund, I I'm not sure.
So with the with the concessions, the concessions is 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 not going to be making money. Per se. I mean, we would be buying candy pop and and treats at a wholesale plot, at wholesale price. But we we, you know, we are selling them with sales tax and. You know, the the amount of staff time it is it takes to sell and stock and purchase there, there's not a lot of money. To support anything other than just the sale of those items.
Where do you get your staff from?
It's the cashiers.
I mean, who who are they? City employees? Do you hire them?
They're temporary, just like the lifeguards.
Yeah, they're so some of these employees are not all lifeguards. If for some reason, we don't have the full, we have the 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 lifeguards, but we also have. If for some reason, they just didn't pass the the training, we can use them for cashiering, selling concessions, doing other things there. So it's still a seasonal employee.
Okay.
Okay, this hurt.
Luke, question I had looking back at some of the revenues coming in, we're not giving, we're not offering swim lessons.
That is in the revenue, that is captured in the revenue for the swimming lessons.
No, swim lessons, just because I didn't see that on your schedule.
As far as revenue?
Um, yeah, but also when you talked about your daily schedule. You know, you talked about back on, I forget what number page this is, but it talks about laps, lap swimming hours. Pool season doesn't say anything about lessons, says open swim, lap, family, and then admission prices, but it doesn't. Say anything about. You know.
Swimming lessons.
Swim lessons unless you have those hit at someplace else.
No, but it is included in the revenue as far, yes, I did include it in the revenue. It's not in in my hours of operating. I included just what was a season hours of operating for the pool. But yes, you're right, that. Just the swimming lessons alone on on their separate is not included in the swim hours.
So for revenue amounts, do you have a number for that for to swim lessons?
Broken down. Just for the swimming lessons alone, I don't think I have that with me.
My other, this is a follow up also swim, the one Reynolds of the pool.
I I have those for twenty one through twenty three.
Yeah, those those are included in the revenue part of it. I didn't break down the revenue to every little thing, but it is included as everything that we. We captured in revenue for the pool, for the for the season.
I just think that that number would be.
Yeah.
Useful to know as well as the swim lessons, in case there's a adjustment that could be made to the fees. For rental and or swim lessons. Thank you.
Carry on, sir.
And.
Energy, you have something to say?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. So just a couple of things that I wanted to put on the record here that I I've been looking at short term, long term solutions. So. And this is something that I've been writing quite a bit. Since Councilor Fausto really challenged us to communicate more, so I appreciate that. And I've taken on that challenge and and let the public know we have sunnysidewa.com. Which is a blog site that we're writing to and well, I've been writing to quite a bit. And this is some information I have. It's an article on there. So if the public wants to jump on, you can subscribe to the blog. And and Jackie's got it up right now. So I'm referring to the the one article. Where I say it's going to take a lot of things to support the pool. So one of the earlier articles, let me see what I labeled it. Opening the pool, fixing wells, restoring staff requires your help. So there there's a section in there where I talk specifically about the pools. And I go through some of the things that we could potentially do to to raise revenue to support the pool. Obviously, raising entrance fees, that's pretty, that's really tricky. Right now, we charge two bucks to get in. Even if you double that fee. That's a tough one because a lot of our kids don't have a ton of money and you raise it to four or five bucks per session. That's ten bucks a day. Times, you know, let's say you swim even three to five times a week. That's a, that's a pretty big burden for our community. But that is, that is an option, obviously. Increasing the utility tax and this is something I've been working with Debbie on and and communicating sort of. What the ultimate. Rate the that our customers would have to pay. So. Ballpark figure and jump in here, Debbie, on on amount. So so every one percent that we would raise the utility tax. It would generate roughly a hundred to a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. So if you raise it two percent, you can cover some of the costs, two point five percent would generally probably cover the whole thing. We could put a moratorium or a sunset clause on this and and this money raised could specifically go to support the pool. And talking to Debbie a little bit, you know, ultimately, what does that mean to each rate payer's bill? So every one percent on a bill for a for a base pay, let's say it's a hundred and fifty. Bucks that you pay base, base rate, obviously, that's going to be variable if you're. You know, you have, you've used more water or whatever the case may be. There's a lot of variables there. So we can't say. Every customer's bill is a hundred and fifty bucks for water, sewer, garbage, because there's also. Business customers who pay more. But if I had a hundred and fifty dollar bill, every one percent raised would be one percent of a hundred and fifty. So if you did, so you know, you know, do the basic math. I mean, you're looking probably at. One to four dollars depending on what your usage was. If you have a big house, a big family. It's going to vary, be variable somewhere in there per month. So it's not going to go up fifty dollars a month if you guys do this. It's going to be. And I hesitate to say it's a small cost because everybody's situation is different and I'm not comfortable saying, you know, because a dollar to me. Could mean something different to somebody else. I'm very conscious of, you know, communicating that because that it's a burden. And it's something that that we'd have to ask the taxpayers to do and and our our residents. But the council can make that decision, you know, without going to a vote of the people. It's a it's a short term pit fix for a long term problem. But that is one option, counsel. Some longer term options, you could create a public facilities district. This does take a vote of the people. You can institute a sales tax. This is something that was recently done in the city of Pasco. It's a point two percent sales tax, but you you know, you have to have a lot of buy in from the community, a lot of educational. Elements and you have to have a real clear vision on what you wanted to support. Another option is a levy lid lift, which can go for specific functions like pools and recreation. But that also does require a vote of the people and, you know, I will say in this climate, a levy lid lift is a tough sell. If it's not for public safety issues. A levy lid lift, I mean, it really affects our levy rate, which allows us to generate more revenue. But it's a tough climate right now with. Every all prices rising and it seems like inflation has affected just about everyone. Grants, I've I've been beating the bushes for grants. It's it's tough to get operational grants. I'm I'm learning typically grants. Go to infrastructure for assets and things like that. I I did talk to a gentleman from C Mar today. And he is looking for me through Radio Cadena. So I really appreciate those guys. They're trying to help us out a little bit. Just maybe finding something. Is it called C Mar or am I making that up? That's what I thought. I always want to call them the Seahawks, but 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 they're the organization that runs Radio.
Probably help too.
Yeah, that's true, you know, but I have been beating the bushes and and looking around. Community donations. We did have an organization that that did the the recycling drive. And they donated some some money to that, but it's it was a couple hundred bucks. But it's a, it's a big ask to ask the community. I have had some nonprofits reach out to me. I'm going to talk to one tomorrow. I don't necessarily want to say their name in public, but. They're interested to see how, you know, they can help us out. The other option, obviously, cut hours and and staff and and have it open just certain amount of time. So. Those are, those are the options. I would say the quickest fix, I don't know, you probably don't want to call it a fix, but what will. Definitely get the pool open while we come up with some long term solutions. Is that that increase on the utility tax? It's, you know, it's a tough one and and you guys will certainly take some heat and so will I, but. But that is the easiest and quickest way to support this effort with the most minimal across the board. Everybody buying in. It's, you know, if if there was a way to look at it. You know, we support our schools through tax levies and that's where the vast majority of our taxes go when you look at it. Probably sixty, seventy percent, Derek, as I see you shake your head. You know, this is one of those where it's, you know, we definitely need things for our kids to do and. And another thing before. We are having a meeting on next Tuesday, the twenty eighth at twelve o'clock and six P M. At the fire station. To talk about these things about bringing a boys and girls club to town. That's something I've been talking to people about and there's definitely a feeling. In the city that that we need to give our kids opportunities at recreational opportunities and. Other things and I'm I'm kind of veering off from this. I'm going to be quiet, but but I wanted to give, at least see the options and let let the community know that I've been working extremely hard. Just looking at the at these options. And the quickest recommendation I can make is this increase of the utility tax. Because it'll help our kids have the pool this year and that will allow staff to really look at. You know, if we're going to do and look at these other options, you know, how do we go about it the best way?
All right. Thanks, sir.
Mr. Mayor?
We have a question down here.
Oh, Mr. Ripley.
You know, tonight on the news, now, and this is just coming off the top of my head. Yakima City Council was going to talk about their aqua aquatic center. And they were talking about using the stormwater. Rates, the stormwater money to help pay for that. Now, is that? Would that help in our situation? Do we have enough in the stormwater?
They're gonna, they're gonna be using stormwater utility tax.
Stormwater utility tax?
Utility tax.
I didn't catch it all, huh?
And and I was going to defer to Debbie, so thanks for that, Debbie, because.
And I didn't mean to interrupt you. I'm sorry.
No, that's good.
And and Debbie, do you do you know of any other options that I might be missing? I'll lean on some of your expertise and because because some of our enterprise funds. I don't know if they're more flexible than others or or is the utility tax our only option here?
So general fund revenue, property tax, sales tax, utility tax. That's primarily the only funds that can be used to operate the pool. So those are competing with the police and fire and the balance of city operations. There is a parks and recreation district. That's something that can be looked at in addition. A PFD would be a public facilities district that would be. You know, facilities based, but the parks and rec district is another voter approved. Mechanism, which is something that Seela has. Seela has a parks and rec school or park and rec district and they have it with the county. The school district and then the city, the same with Natchez, and that's how they fund their swimming pool and have the operation costs to maintain the pool.
And so I forgot, so I appreciate your your remembering that.
Yeah.
One thing that we've been looking at and and this is another option that. I was looking at the, Raul said someone approached the port about buying. This, what's the name of the seller's place that Tucker Sellers? I mean, you know, to generate revenue for a one time thing, I I mean, if that is an option. If we sold that property, I I think we purchased it for about a half million. I'm assuming it has about the same value. I I mean, I I hate using one time things, but this is an emergency. The the only issue with that, as I talk with Ben, we'd have to surplus that. We'd have to do a professional appraisal. You could do a sealed bid or you could put it on the open market, right? Once it's, once it's surplus. That is an option. The the thing we have to to see is, you know, what do we value?
That's the only water supply to the park out there.
And that is an issue. Can you explain that a little bit?
That is, that is correct. That is that well there supplies water to the bathrooms. So. If this is something was an option, there could be an agreement, maybe that could be wrote up about. Just using the water because it's seasonal. We only use it during the bathroom season, which is typically from about the middle of April to end of October. And. Until we or until we bought some time or the other option would be in the future would be to change those bathrooms to the type that doesn't have water. He just kind of a. Upsized from a outhouse.
And and counsel, if I if I may, with all respect, the the we just, we just ended a year. Where the twenty twenty four budget was balanced with the sale of a property that never happened. It took us a long time to go through all the budget. We we just finished tonight. The twenty twenty four expenditures. We haven't even closed out twenty twenty four yet. We had to cut over two million dollars worth of expenditures out of the budget. In order to make it to the end of this year. The the thought as your finance director right now of selling a piece of property, one time, one time money. To, I hate to say the word, kick the can down the road to open the pool for one year. I just. I I don't know. I don't know how well that would go. What do we do next year for that?
It's a very valid point and thank you for bringing that up and.
Mr. Mayor?
Go ahead, Mr. Deputy Mayor.
Yeah, so I've been listening before I started asking my questions. So I have a few questions, Raul. Do we plan on 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 dropping the pool assistance from three to one? Is is that, is that one of your your ideas? Also, the swimming lessons. I saw one of the expenditures, there was a reimbursement for sixty eight dollars for swimming lessons. Obviously, there's, you know, right now we don't have the pool open, so they're getting reimbursed. How many more of those do we have on the books that we need to reimburse? The lifeguard training, is that something that, you know, do the lifeguards need to do that on a yearly basis or are these? New lifeguards coming in as employees or, you know, how often do we get returning lifeguards? I have, I have a lot of those questions and and also what I haven't been hearing is is, you know, expenditures, you know. I appreciate city manager for being proactive and finding ideas and ways to to fund the pool. That these expenditures, right? I mean, we have a pool, a car for the pool. And the pool's only open three months out of the year, you know, it doesn't make sense to have a a a car. Yeah, they're they're looking at it right now, seeing what we can do. But, you know, why do we need three assistant managers and then a pool manager and then. Department head, you know, with the fifteen thousand dollar expenditure there. We need to sit down and and really talk about the expenditures and in a way to better run the pool. You know, I I I do it on my personal life, you know, I tell the kids, is it a need or is it a want? You know, let's, let's, let's go back and and see what we can cut. Where we can better operate this pool. And then we can talk about, you know, raising the taxes. Is I I just don't feel comfortable not going back, cutting expenditures. And just going straight to 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 raising taxes, you know, it's it's not responsible to to do it that that way. And and yeah, I mean, we we have a subcommittee. If we can meet, you know, as as early as as next Monday or if Missable is not going to be here. If she can forward me the expenditures line by line for two thousand twenty four for the pool. That way I could check it out with my fellow counselors at the subcommittee. And once she gets back, you know, we could, we could tackle this. Definitely, we need to do something.
Thank you, sir. And, you know, for my part, too, I tend to agree with a lot of what the deputy mayor said. I think we really need to look for ways to streamline our operations, make them more efficient and a little more cost effective if we can possibly find ways to do that. And I applaud the work of our finance subcommittee in going through the twenty four budget line by line, and we've already kind of accepted the task before us to have to do that throughout the course of the. Twenty twenty five budget year as well. I do want to clarify one thing. A car pool or a pool car is not for the swimming pool. It is a car that is available for use of city hall staff members for when they need to. Make a run to the post office or make hardware store run or something like that, or maybe to a training. It's available for any. City hall employee who signs out for it is not specifically designed for the use of the swimming pool. It's available for any city hall employee who signs out for it, is not specifically designed for the use of the swimming pool staff. So that is easy to get confused, it's not a term that we that we use in everyday conversation anymore. But it is a uh, it is just a card for general use, so the car is not specifically for the swimming pool. But I do agree with what the deputy mayor said, I think he he made some very valid points. And we need to diligently work at streamlining operations. And then, of course, Miss Sable made a very, very clear point as well as one of the big errors in the twenty four budget is we were hoping for the sale of property. And that came back to bite us in a very big way and we do not want to make that mistake again. So yes, we may or may not want to sell the property that we own out there by the Sunny View Park. But we cannot look at that as a way to balance our budget and to solve a financial problem until the. Property has actually been sold if we so decide to do that, so we we need to be careful about that.
Mister Mayor, if I may, um, one thing we are fighting is time. So, you know, and and I think the the easy question is to say, well, why didn't you guys prepare this already? So I think we, you know, number one, I want to put on the record for the community is. We had to wait till the budgets finalized cuz, you know, it's ultimately a council decision. So things were certainly in flux, you know, and cutting the hours and staff, that. Certainly is one of the recommendations that you see in the article and I can appreciate the deputy mayor, you know, cuz that. That is certainly one of the good, I don't know, you want to call it a good option, but a viable option. The the thing that we're facing is time because what I'm learning is that. Right now, all the pools around town are scrambling for lifeguards. And if if we wait for committees, subcommittees and to come back to this board. And if we wait till late February, we're out of the game, you know? And and I will say, what is that? So I think we need to define what is that cutoff time that we're either cutting people? Or cuz we gotta get the lifeguards is my understanding and people to run this operation. Because the Y M C A is our competitor, Grandview is our competitor, the, you know, Prosser. I think there's a big pool in uh, not Tyotin, but but right up the road, so there, I mean. Yeah, there, I mean, although so without dribbling on, it is, there is a lot of competition in this space.
And I think our our solution is gonna be a combination of both really, streamlining operations and raising some money from somewhere, so go ahead, sir.
And just to add also to that is in on the equipment that needs to be replaced. That decision also needs to be made soon because we the equipment needs to be ordered, there's also. Uh, a lead time to get this equipment in and get it installed and have it ready, tested and everything. So that also needs to be done and have it installed by April. Um, which means that we have to order it in advance so that we make sure that we gave it enough time for everything to show up and. Make sure everything's there and have it installed and tested. The other thing too with the lifeguards is there's no guarantee that we can know how many lifeguards are coming back. Depending on, um, you know, cuz they're as, most of these are teenagers, so as as they're in school. And they keep coming back, we're gonna lose some because they they're moving on. Same with the the uh, the assistant managers on there. The we had, when you have rentals, they can also only work so many hours per week, whether they're going to school. Or they're involved in other sports, they also have limitations to the hours that they can work. So when you're talking about the pool hours and then you're talking about rentals and then their shifts. You also need somebody that's overseeing them, but then that also happens to probably be. A a young adult that also needs somebody else to oversee them. And that's where that breakdown was because they're they they they're scheduled so that it'll end up working into. Outside of the hours that they're only allowed and and making sure that we also have enough staff for the requirements of. These these pool rentals and then the regular hours of the week. Um, and then within the only hours that they can also only work, so those are the things that we have to keep in mind.
Hey, Mister Beeler.
And you can vouch for this too, you're also dealing with the Yakima County Health Department. You gotta get the license before and you got to dictate your hours of operations and they okay it. And they're gonna tell you how many employees you need for how many gallons you have as far as lifeguards. And then you got insurance that you have to really watch out for too.
Correct, and then we and and same with their hours, just through L and I and other things that what they're allowed and not allowed to do. So those are the all the things that we're looking at and and speaking of that too with the Department of Health, depending on what we decide to do. That permit fee is, it will be due here soon too, but obviously it's something that, you know, I I either send in or not. Depending on we decide.
Further questions, Miss Ascas.
And then you also stated earlier that we'd have to let the trainer know, the lifeguard trainer know. When she'd start before the end of this month.
So, yes, in the past, we've always let her know at the end of January. So that she also has a schedule because she goes throughout the valley and does her training. So that we're on the schedule also so that we can have her for the training when the time comes and she has, she has City of Sunnyside on the list.
Okay.
So.
And there's a lot of moving parts in there, but at the same time, it's a valuable discussion, I'm not sure we're gonna come to a conclusion tonight. But there's a lot for us to think about and there are different options. Um, as said before, we've got options of raising some fees, bringing in some revenue from different sources, but also uh looking at streamlining things a little bit. How we can maybe change the way we structure things a little bit, calls for some creativity perhaps and. Sometimes that's that's hard for us as we get older, it's more and more difficult to uh think outside of that box, so. So is there further questions? Okay, Raul, do you have more to go or?
On the on the pool, I'm done with that one, going forward, we're we're gonna be going into the community center.
So before he goes into the community center, are there any more questions relating to the pool?
I have a question.
Go ahead, Miss Pesca.
So going back to the concession stand, you said that usually people don't pass their training or they don't, they don't pass then they'll manage the concession stand?
They would be used in at the pool house doing other things if if we had enough lifeguards and some that took it didn't. Then they could be used somewhere else there, cashiering, things like that. Um, in the past, it's been done that way.
Okay, well, just a question out of curiosity, would there be an a way or an option to have volunteers manage that this year? Like if people wanted to volunteer their time, that way that would be less of an expense in order to operate this year, would that be an option?
I think so, and one thing we've talked about counselors is perhaps um allowing some of the food trucks to park on the peripheral of the. And I don't know how we would work that out if it was a first come, first served basis or, you know, do away with some of those expenses between the food and the labor. Because that obviously is an expense and then there's risk with that. So that has, it hasn't been a formal discussion, but it's something we've kind of kicked around as an option. So I I don't see why we couldn't eliminate that and outsource that for either a cheap cost or or however we work that out. So I'm I'm open to discussions if people, if we had food trucks that came along, we're like, hey, we'll service that for this for the summer, I I'd be more than open to that.
Further questions, Miss Ripley.
Yeah, what if we uh tried to buy the candy wholesale and? You know, make it into a a little business there where we get more revenue from the pool.
I think, I I mean, I think that's a viable option, you know, obviously. You know, my big fear is that we sort of wait too long in the discussion, yeah.
Yeah.
Cuz I I've learned in government, yeah, we we, you know, we analyze, analyze, analyze. And um, I just don't want to miss the boat. And and Debbie, can you um kind of give us some guidance in terms of this utility tax? If how, we can unravel it, let's say we put a sunset, we say. And we'd have to determine obviously the length that we want it to support the pool. But it 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 can be sunset clause or whatever we call it, a rescind clause as easily as the council. Allows it to happen, correct?
Correct, cuz it would be passed through an ordinance. So it basically, it would commence five days after it's been, you know, after publication. And if it were rescinded, it would stop in that same amount of time.
Thank you, cuz I I wanted to give the public some confidence, if council does decide to do that. It's not something, I mean, they could hold the us accountable to say, hey, you said it was gonna stop and by ordinance, we could put that stop date in, correct?
Yeah.
Yeah, so, okay, and I just wanted to put that out there.
Yeah.
For the public, so they don't think we're trying to pull a fast one on them and collect more tax, that it will definitely have an end date.
And we could create a special, um, you know, a special fund per se to keep. That utility tax in and the expenditure in. So it would have its own revenue and its own expenditure that, um, you know, council could. And and the community could could ask for any time to see how much money is coming in and how much money is being spent on the pool.
Okay, further questions or comments?
Just have, just have one in regard to, um, you said that the um. Pool already you need to do some repairs on the chemical filtration system. Your filters and something with the chemicals.
Uh, the chemical feed pump, the chemical feed pump.
We need to do that before we need to put water in it, right?
Yes.
So we have to think about that in the 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 now time, the short time. About ordering those particular bits of of uh, so you can do do the testing and the installation and ordering and et cetera.
We we have, we have operated the pool without a chemical injector, I do remember a pool manager, um, my kids were on swim team for. A decade or more, I remember a a pool manager coming in and and pouring the chemicals into the pool and telling the kids to jump in and kick it around and stir it up. Which I didn't think was particularly safe, but I do remember that happening in sometime in the past twenty years where it wasn't. And so somebody would come in first thing in the morning and just pour the chemicals in. Um, obviously with the swim team and the little kids, eight year olds and so practicing, I don't think that's advisable, but you know, do that at the end of the night. Or something like that, let it circulate overnight as well, so it is possible to operate it. Without making that repair, it's not the best case, um, but. You know, if, yeah, that might be an area that we could lay some cost.
I think we probably have to look at what the last health department report said, if that was a finding. Um, cuz the health department is getting a lot more strict on that and and to administer the the powder chlorine, I think you have to wear a respirator now.
Oh.
And and that's, yeah, on that, um, because if something was to happen for some reason, you didn't have enough or too much. And and then the Department of Health came out and started checking and we're running it without basically no way to really measure, just adding. What we think might be the right amount, uh, could open up uh as a public pool, the city to liability and and different matters that it.
That's true, sometimes I think I allowed and sometimes it was really good for me to get uh pushed back, so. All right, thank you, sir. Carry on, sir, we're a community center, I think.
Okay, so on the community center, uh, just to give you an update of where we're at right now. Um, so we made some current changes, which is the city clerk has updated the current closure wording to the website. That was updated, um, city clerk has also updated the point of contact information that was also on the website from. The rec supervisor that was on there to public works, uh, phone numbers and emails. Um, some of this stuff that we're working on now, um, everything has been moved over to the public works department and working on it. We're also modifying the reservation form. Um, I T. I had I T. Forward the phones that were. The uh, the calls from the community center, forward them to the public works department so that somebody answers the phone. So we're working through those things right now. Um, next slide, this is is just representing the structure of the fees there. This not necessarily is the current uh fee schedule, but it just gives you the breakdown of how it's rented. Uh, you know, you can rent the kitchens, you can rent the full or it breaks it down by the hours for the gym, the kitchen. Whether you're nonprofit or 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 not. Um, and then have some of the boxes that you check down below for other things that um you would want to include. Um, as part of the process for the rental, so this is something that would be updated to the current fee schedule. But uh, everything else would stay the same as far as the the hours. Next slide. This is just the community center rental requirements, it just gives you a little breakdown of what's required when you go through the process of renting the center. Uh, you know, as far as insurance and how many personnel you're you're you wanting to rent it for, if it's less than fifty, more than fifty. Um, and so some of the requirements. Next slide, uh, other event center, uh, so we, you know, I I looked, we looked around and just see what other. Event centers are going for here in Sunnyside, so that gives you uh, one of them on on six and and Franklin there, Navaros. That's what they charge for their center, um, with their deposit and what it includes. Then you have the Monarcha, which is over here on six, just north of the railroad tracks. And so they actually have two of them, one if it can accommodate up to a hundred and seventy three people. And then the other one, they can accommodate up to four hundred and sixty six people, so they have a pretty good size event center uh somewhere. Um, next slide, these are some of the rental opportunities that um the center has experienced in the past. Uh, it's been used for family reunions, anniversary parties, job fairs, baby showers, birthday parties, class reunions. Uh, quinceañeras, public outreach forums, uh, graduation parties, wedding receptions, church events. Uh, holiday parties and so that just gives you an idea of some of the things that could be held there. Uh, next slide. So with that, if you have any questions?
Counsel, questions for Mister Sanchez.
I have a question.
Go ahead, Mister Deputy Mayor.
Um, Raoul, how many events did we have in two thousand four and how much revenue did we get? Two thousand twenty four, just for the the events.
How much revenue did we bring in twenty twenty four?
Yeah.
With events, rentals.
I don't have that number off the top of my head.
Do, uh, do we know why we don't?
Go ahead.
Get those numbers, yeah, we could get those numbers to us that appreciate it, but do we know why we don't simplify the process? I mean, we, if you look at the other halls, they have a a set price and we have a per hour, right? Why why don't we simplify it, is is that something that's turning off uh the customers and and not renting it?
Well, I think in the past, yeah, because some people may only want to rent rent it for a couple hours. Where the other halls, they're renting it for the day, they don't break it down by the hour, that is their full day rental. Um, if somebody wanted to rent it for just a birthday party and they want to rent it for two, three hours, we are giving that option.
Okay, but that's, and and that's what I kind of needed the numbers to see how it compares cuz, you know, I I drive down. Navaros, you know, all these other halls in the summertime and springtime and there's always quinceañeras weddings every weekend. So we we need to start, you know, attracting those events, um, let's let's start bringing in those events and let's find out why. We don't bring as many events to the community center.
And yeah, that's that's, again, I I guess as far as marketing, um, that's something that we can work on as far as trying to put something out there. Social media, things that maybe in the past that just wasn't really pushed and now we'd like to. With what we were showing on there, what it's available for, I think that if we leave it by the hour, it does open it up for more rentals where. Somebody may want a place like this to host just a a two, three hour uh birthday party versus having to. You have to rent it for the full day, uh, same with the options of whether you want to rent the kitchen or not. And we've had where some of them will cater it, so they don't need the kitchen, they're just gonna cater it and that's that's fine. Um, but in other cases, they may want the the gym and the kitchen, and so we're giving those options.
Go ahead, Miss Hurd.
I'm just thinking that some of these did the uh, like say Navarro versus the community center. I think that all of the business of a damaged deposits, uses of of, you know, cleanup and. And all of that different things already worked into their um, their rate where we we're breaking it down. But I think it's pretty comparable. I I don't, I think if you if you were to pack it, pack it all together, I think it's pretty comparable. I'm wondering if, um, but we might want to raise it a little bit. That's what I'm thinking.
Yeah, no, and the fee schedule is under, that's not twenty twenty five, that was just a reference of what it was in twenty twenty four and hours. Cuz those are the hours of operation, um, and how we broke it down for the renter. Um, if that's how they, and then they would just check off whatever they want to rent. And then based on the current fee schedule, that would add up to what their cost would be.
Further questions? Counselors.
Not a question, but I think marketing is very crucial because, to be honest, our community, they believe that if they. Rent the community center, that they're not allowed to have alcohol in the community center. And reading this, it says that involving alcohol. And there's a whole list, right, of the steps that need to be taken by getting your license or getting that liability insurance. And I think it's very important for us to also push this message that if they want to rent the community center, that this is an option. Because a lot of times people have quinceañeras, right, or parties, and they all want to have alcohol. And it's just been the word out in our community that the community center is not going to permit alcohol. So maybe even like just pushing that message forward and sharing the steps on how to obtain these liability insurance and the steps that are needed in order to have alcohol. I think we should push that more. That way we could have more traction.
As long as you're, and and as long as you're doing that too, you realize you also have to have security.
Correct. And then the security.
Any of the halls.
Security is actually listed on the.
Listed in there.
Yeah.
Correct.
Yeah, and those are steps that, yeah, if you're going to have alcohol that you have to go through.
Yeah.
Good point. Further questions or comments?
No, I think just to add to Councilor Vasquez, um, I mean, even just over the course of the last year, there were people that didn't even know the county, the community center was up for rental at all. Um, so, um, I I'm not sure how we've marketed it in the past, but I mean, a along with just, I mean, the logistics that come with it, um, announcing it to the community that this is up for for rental still. I think right now also with the messaging with the community center being closed, probably is a lot of people thinking that, um, this will be just closed for the foreseeable future, um, when in reality, uh, we've lost staff unfortunately, um, but we're trying to repurpose a lot of, um, I guess the operations of of the center. Um, so, yeah, just passing along what I heard last year. Yeah.
Well, very good points.
Mm hmm. Yes, and really, really good points. And and I think it's going to take some marketing and that's something we've talked about internally is, do you hire somebody, you know, for a reasonable rate contractually to to do that function? We're working to see if that's even possible. You know, we, it's a, it's a nuance with what we've gone through, um, with releasing staff. So it it's a burden, you know, anytime you market, you need people to create videos and and do different things and write content. And so it's, it's a, it's another burden for Raul's staff. So, um, trying to manage that and and figure out, because every time somebody rents it, somebody's got to go show the people the the facility and, you know, what, who's going to manage it on a Saturday? So these are the kind of things that, as a result, you know, we've got to look at because I I don't think in the past, we've really marketed it because it wasn't the primary function of the of the asset. But now that is the primary function. So we're kind of thinking about that. So, um, you know, it's always been a community center, not that kind of center. But I I think we have a tremendous opportunity to market it to our residents and and for anybody that wants to rent it because I I think it's flexible and what we can do with it. Um, it's a lot of space. The acoustics sound great. So.
Mr. Mayor?
Go ahead.
A a question for the city manager. And Raoul, are are we looking at ways to maybe, um, simplify the application process, like being able to do it completely online, for example, and make payment after approval?
So that is something we're looking at. The the first thing I wanted to do, and I'm emulating our site because with Ellensburg, because we use the same, uh, website system. My hope in the future, very near future, is to make this so it's a one stop payment online. But for the public's sake, so they can have at least something to look at and access, they're going to have to print out the form and then fill it out. In the next couple of months, my hope is to do have an online process, but we were getting bogged in, okay, what are we going to, what program are we going to use? Who's going to write the program? And then, so I said, you know, let let's stop some of the bureaucracy and get something that our residents can look at. And then, you know, we're going to have to do it a little old school with in terms of printing it out and bringing it to City Hall with payment. But we will get there. But I think we're light years ahead of where we were just a few weeks ago. And, um, at least there's something the public can see. I agree that we can simplify some of these fee schedules because I think, you know, it's like looking at a menu at a restaurant. Oh, my gosh, there's, there's, there's so many, um, things that we can do here. And I think the the other thing we got to figure out, do do we want to compete with the private sector or not? Because, you know, the one thing, you know, and this is just my feeling, it's my complete, completely my opinion here. Council, I I don't necessarily think we want to undercut the quinceañera halls because that's their livelihood. You know, we are, we are a government agency. Uh, we're here to support these businesses. We're not here to steal their business. Um, and I don't want to give the perception that, you know, that's the case, um, because I don't think it's fair to those businesses because we have this tremendous asset out there that, you know, and they're in the private sector. So I'm very conscious of that. And, you know, we can talk in our one on ones, kind of how you feel about that, or we could talk about it now. It because there's, there's certain feelings. I dealt with this a little bit at Franklin County because we had an RV park and, you know, our cost was significantly cheaper than some of the other ones. And we would get other RV parks feeling like, hey, you guys are undercutting us, you know, and you've got all these resources and we don't. So you can charge just as much or comparable rates to, so you can put apples to apples and say, hey, you know, we we don't want to undercut you. Then then ultimately the the customer can make the choice. Is this the best choice? So, you know, from from just like a private sector versus public sector standpoint, I think we've got to be conscious of that. Because I don't, I don't want our businesses to feel like, okay, all of a sudden, we're in the, now we're in the quinceañera game and and we're about to win. So anyhow, just something to think about.
Good observation, sir.
I I don't think, I don't think we're undercutting the local halls if you add up what we got. Um, we're, I think we're competitive, but we're, we're not undercutting up at all. And we don't want to do that, as you said, as as we all agree on that, I think. That wouldn't be nice.
Right, yeah. So if the, if council's comfortable with the numbers, we can keep them where they're at. Um, you, if if you're not, or anybody in the public, you know, feel free to communicate with us. And it's, and and I think the other thing too here, council is I know the 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 fee schedules are baked in our codes, but it's something, if we need to flex on it, we can put it on the agenda until we get it right. You know, it's an ongoing living document and I I definitely want to get get it where it's comfortable and and people can utilize it because I think this is an asset that's been underutilized in the past. And, you know, regardless of of who's using it, or if it's a community center, it can be utilized for a lot of different functions.
All right. Well, we've had some good observations, some good comments, and some really good questions. So I appreciate all of that. I know we've got that, as has been mentioned, this fantastic facility, and I certainly like it to be available to the community. It is, after all, the community center. And so, yes, making it available for rentals and that sort of stuff is nice. The long term goal always has to be to get it back open again. And, um, you know, later on, we're going to talk about long term goals. And I think a lot of my long term goals center around youth activities and giving our kids and young people something to do and a place to be. So that's one of the things that we've got to focus on as well. Um, it's easy to talk about rental revenue and that sort of stuff, but still, the the focus has always been the community and the activities that go on there. I know we've got some volunteers who have stepped up in different areas and and mentioned that they'd be willing to lead some of the youth activities. And I want to, um, move forward with some of that as well. I think that we've got those fields out there. We've got basketball courts and and those kinds of things. And I'd like to see where we've got, uh, community volunteers willing to step up and run some programs as well. And I know manager and I have talked about that on a couple of different occasions, and he's pursuing some of that as well. And I don't know if you've made any progress on that.
Yeah, and I wanted to, I'm glad you segued into that, Mayor, because I I wanted to let the public know again. Um, been talking and and not in great detail with Boys and Girls Club. We've exchanged some emails. I've talked to some people who've been involved in Boys and Girls Club. So, um, several people reached out to me, um, after the shooting occurred that was tragic of the 18 year old young woman who was a mother in town. And, you know, there was another cry, hey, we need a Boys and Girls Club. So, reached out to Brian Ace, um, executive director of Boys and Girls Club of Benton Franklin County, who I knew from my Franklin County days. He's, he's going to be here, uh, February 5th, um, to meet with, hopefully three council members can come to this meeting. We're going to meet in City Hall and then go over to the community center. Um, but yeah, there seems to be a lot of support for this. Now, there's startup costs and there's got to be public, um, support of it financially and things like that. But it's definitely something that they've looked at Sunnyside before and think we're a good, good fit. And why I'm saying all this is because they're really interested in programming the community center possibly as one of their Boys and Girls Clubs. I'm really crossing my fingers. If it all works out, I think that would be great. And the community feedback I've gotten so far has been really positive, like, wow, that would be wonderful. Don't want to over promise and under deliver, but that's, those are discussions that are starting. And, uh, again, on Tuesday, January 28th, we're going to meet in the fire hall at that South Eight Street, Eighth Street, uh, 12 o'clock and then 6:00 PM. For those of that can't come during the day, we're going to discuss the Boys and Girls Club. So I'm looking for an exploratory committee, um, that can help out with planning, who are passionate about kids and who want to help. School district's going to be there. I put this on Ryan Maxwell's, uh, target and and his purview. Uh, I'm reaching out to community stakeholders to get, you know, to get everybody that possibly can be there. Um, so community council, all the people you know, the stakeholders, um, because I'm recognizing, you know, i- in order for us to advance economically, we've got to, we we have to tackle some of these social issues and get these kids when they're young before they get into these gangs. And, uh, you know, I'm willing to help out as much as as we can and and, um, and I know council will as well.
Yes, I just wanted the manager to bring some of that stuff up because I think that's a real positive step in the right direction as well. I think it relies on community members, but it gives our community members an opportunity to be a part of the solution. Um, it's real easy to point out the problems, but we've got some very talented individuals in this community who can really help bring some solutions together and make this, make this a viable option. So I'd like to see some movement in that direction. And if you know, community members who are interested or have expressed some sort of interest in that sort of thing, um, please get them in touch with the manager, make sure they're able to attend that meeting. Um, I I think there's some real potential for, for some good stuff to happen, even though the city may not have the budget to do a lot of things. I think there's still some, there's some really good stuff that we can have happen here in town. It's just going to take some buy in from community members. So thank you for that, sir.
Thank you.
Any more that we have before us on the community center?
That's all I had unless there's other questions.
Questions then for Mr. Sanchez?
It's me. No.
All right. Hearing none. Next item on the agenda, animal control services. Receive a presentation regarding animal control services. Mr. City Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So Derek Bratton, our community and economic development director, is going to talk on this. He put together a presentation to give you an update on what's happening with animal control. Uh, this has been another hot topic of discussion in the community. Obviously, um, we have a lot of dogs that, you know, are running around public and and we get the feedback, um, with with some of the budget crunches. Our, uh, our animal control officer left and and that job got moved into the community and economic development space with our code enforcement group. So, uh, both members of code enforcement are here tonight in case they need to answer some questions. And and, uh, if you guys want to come forward and it'd be nice to get you up on the dais and the microphone. And, uh,
They may not agree.
Yeah, they may not. Both Dave and, both Dave and Javi who do a great job for us. Um, and they're really in the trenches. So and and and, uh, kudos to them because, you know, they've taken this role on with no complaints. I mean, I, I mean, they didn't say one word on the negative. So I appreciate, you know, both of them for stepping up. They're going to need some training, but they gladly took it on and said, you know what, we'll do everything we can for the city. So definitely appreciate both of them. Uh, with that being said, Mr. Mayor, that's how I'll tee it up.
All right, Mr. Bratton.
Thank you. Um, just first of all, we don't have a animal control badge, and that would be probably from a county, but it was as close as I could find. Um, but we should. You know, the animal control situation in Sunnyside is in flux, um, with the, the, um, with our animal control officer resigning last year, kind of caught us flat footed a little bit. Um, I personally have never managed animal control, but I am learning rapidly, um, as well as, um, David and Javier. Um, so as mentioned, you know, the animal control officer resigned in 24. And since then, code enforcement's been kind of dealing with the emergent issues during the day and then police handle it in the evenings and on the weekends. Um, during business hours, my code enforcement is is the primary, um, contact for animal control, um, where they've got a basic understanding of the RCWs and local ordinances regarding animal control, but they're going to need more training and and frankly, experience. I mean, these are the types of things you can only learn so much. It's just like being any other sort of officer. The real learning is in process and on the street. Due to resource limitations at this time, we have to prioritize basically, um, our responses to animal control complaints because we we have very limited resources. So we're focused on emergency situations such as dangerous dogs, injured animals, and cruelty to animal reports. We do not capture stray cats. I still don't know where that cat on our charge from November came from. I don't know. But I could get into that. It has to do with the weird arrangements that we have with some of the, um, with how things are delivered. Um, we currently do have all the necessary equipment for capture of the animals as well as a chip reader. So if they are licensed and shipped, we can find that in the moment. However, we do have two kennels. They need work. Um, there are two kennels that are being, that are over in the police. I call it your, your vehicle yard. I don't know if that's the proper term for it. Um, but and they're, they're nice. It may even be able to be converted into three. Either, so they've got good bones, but they need work. Um, you know, like I said, there, there's one that's got a cover. They're basically exposed to the elements and they're okay in the spring, for the most part, in the summer and fall. But in the winter, it can get weird. Um, right now, we don't have any in them. So. Uh, we do currently have one eye, uh, in a government agreement for animal control ser- services with City of Grandview. Uh, due to the dynamics that are currently going on for the city, our city, um, that we need to look at this and and renegotiate the agreement to some degree because either it's going to be less, such that we're not really providing services for them, or maybe it could be even expanded by creating a little bit more of a, um, robust system in the lower valley. And I'll get into that a little bit. Um, a lot of it's in flux. Like I said, we're, we're learning and we're, we're getting this stuff together. We also have an agreement with the Yakima Valley Humane Society. Um, they take the animals that we can't hold, um, due to either they've been there too long, uh, they have medical issues that need immediate, um, attention, or, um, we're just full, um, or they've been here too long. So we we have a requirement to hold them for a certain amount of time. Up to two weeks, but that's going to be dependent on the arrangement we have with the humane society. But after two weeks, the humane society gets, can keep the animal if they're the ones that are holding it, um, after two weeks, or based on agreement, we can bring them up. We are, so. Okay, so last year, we did a total of 56 animals were delivered to the humane society. It says that we are charged through our animal control contract, and that was at a total cost of 11,960 in 2024. New contract is being presented to the council on the 27th. In this contract, we will be guaranteed, or were promised up to four kennel spaces per month at a rate of $1,000 a month for not, not each total. That's, that's, we just pay them a flat rate. We get up to four beds. They do not stack. In other words, if we only use two bed kennels this month, we don't get six next month. It's four, 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 four. Now, running numbers, I mean, that seems like it would be close to adequate, um, depending on exactly what was going on with those 56 dogs that were brought last year. That's 48 dog capacity. Um, but we are paying a little bit more. Um, but it's kind of where we're at. Um, no kill shelters are expensive to operate. And, um, the original contract was significantly higher and Chief Laman was able to negotiate it down to this current rate. Um, the next animal control officer trainings are in Burien, Washington. It's a five day program and it's going to cost roughly three to 5,000. The reason there's a range like that is going to depend on hotel costs at that time, various other variables in there. Um, so somewhere in that range. to have both our officers trained. The primary focus on that is, is to ensure legal compliance, making sure that they're aware of all the regulations, the do's and the don'ts and things like that. Much of this is articulated in the RCW as well. But it's one thing to read and then it's another to actually have someone explain it to you. So in the near term, we're maintaining the status quo. I'm sorry, that would be the next slide. So the primary focus is on animal, emergency animal control issues, ensuring that dog owners have current log licenses when contacting and coordinating with other agencies to better address the issue long-term. We really need something bigger and better in the lower valley. Um, and what I mean by that is right now we've got a whole hodgepodge where I think that if we were to get together with the surrounding communities, we could probably bring together more, so I say regional approach, um, to where we're all working together in a singular. And it makes sense that Sunnyside would be the location for that facility. So we're in discussions, the, the city's of Grandview and Prosser. And then, you know, as those things develop, we'll, we'll keep the council or at least city manager Gonzalez apprises where those are at. And of course, at any time upon request, we'd be able to give you an update on those. Those are just kind of starting. I mean, I'd say about a month or so, we've been trying to get these things, about two months, actually. We're also exploring whether to work with the city of Prosser to use their facility. We kind of, that's not as high a idea, but it's one that's out there. If some of these others don't work or we find that things aren't working quite the way we think they will. However, the primary, you know, Prosser's a lot closer than, than Yakima Humane Society, but it comes with a caveat that we would need to cover Prosser, our staff would if their guy's out or their person's out. And if they're in Prosser, now they're not here. So like I said, it's an option. It's not the one I'm really leaning towards. We're also seeking a, a meeting with the, um, local veterinary clinic, Councilwoman Frazo, you're, you're kind of the lead on that. So once we get that kind of figured out, we're hoping to find out if there's, there's an interest in them to assist us. And if so, what, to what degree? We also, as, as was earlier discussed, we do own a building with approximately 2.72 acres on Ray Road. And right now it's being leased by a commercial enterprise. You know, I've been out to the building, regardless of the inside. Initially, that was my idea, just convert some space inside the building. But the reality is, is a big enough chunk of property that for a nominal price, we could build a structure that will kennel the animals better, create dog runs that allows for the minimum one hour of timeout. You have to let dogs out into a space daily. And minimize efforts and, and, and the operational requirements for that facility. And, you know, it's between five to $15,000, depending on exactly how and where we went. Now, what I've priced out here is for 20 by 30 building, but a 10 by 30 could work. Even smaller, different arrangements. So it's just an idea of costs. And then, and as mentioned earlier too, Grandview may desire to contribute to that facility. And if that, then that just changes all sorts of dynamics, um, and, and things like that. Another thing that we're looking into, but it's a little nascent is the ability to leverage volunteers and parties that are forming community service to assist, help lower the costs of, you know, have them go over there for the community service, feed and let dogs out, you know, like we don't know yet. We have to look at some of those things. But, but basically figure out a way to create it. The, the, the cost of the physical structure is not the big tough part for animal control. It's the labor and the staff time and, and, and what you need in staffing to really run, you know, like if you're going to run a full blown facility, you've got to have vets, vets assistance, radiology. I mean, it's, it's a hospital basically, and we don't have those abilities. And something like this, um, would, would probably take at least three to six months to complete. Again, depending on the complexity, it could take longer. And, um, so I am more than happy to answer any questions. That's kind of where we're at right now.
All right. Council questions. Mr. Beeler.
Every time I go and give my license for my two dogs, I drop a couple hundred in the bucket. Do you know what's in the bucket at City Hall?
I do not. Um, a couple of things. Up until this point, my office has not been involved in dog licenses. So I don't really know anything about it. That's in a transition thing. Uh, finance should have. But then I found out last year, we didn't bill for dog licenses or something happened with them last year. So yeah, I honestly have no idea where the revenue is. And it is something I'm curious about because, I don't even know what revenue impact that would have on the city.
Well, I'm curious. I got ticket number 31 and 32. There's more than many dogs in Sunnyside.
Well, I know what numbers my dogs are.
Yeah. And, and, and that's something, like I said, something that apparently happened last year and, and, and I'm always saying this because I remember Deputy Mayor Gavam bringing it up that something happened with the, um, and they didn't bill them last year. They did bill them this year.
Yeah, I got mine.
But, um, so because of that, I don't have a good count of who and what.
Okay, Ms. Ripley.
Do we still have the, um, dog catcher truck?
Yes.
Okay. And it's going to take both code enforcers to, uh, run the dog catcher?
It's not a matter of them running to, they both will, you know, they don't, yeah. I mean, and, and it's not like that's all they're doing. They're also still doing all their code enforcement things that they were doing before. So it'll be, it'll be a tandem kind of thing, um, to where when it's a dog situation, then they'll go out with the dog truck. Probably when it's a code enforcement, they may not. And then there's also shuffling going on with the vehicles. So those will probably, that number that are in my current office will probably be reduced. So I don't know, but they're still, that's part of the whole lease thing and moving those vehicles around. Um, in the end, you know, we'll, we'll end up with the vehicles we need, but probably only two. Right now, I guess you could say three are in my department. In the end, it'll be two.
Ms. Hart.
Yeah. Well, you know, we do have, or we should still have $10,000 roughly that came from the Festival of Trees in 2023. There was a part of a fundraiser that was to go towards the dog shelter. Now, where that money is, I'm not entirely sure, but it should be in our finances somewhere. But that was money that we raised at a, at the Festival of Trees in 2023 for a, at animal shelter, if you guys recall. The other thing is, is the person, the reason that we were looking, part of the reason we were looking at the Tucker Sellers property was not only to have, as a place to have an animal shelter, but also that we were talking of having training between the Grandview and the Sunnyside fire departments, which is a different issue. It's good to know what we can get, you know, with the money that we have. If that, that $10,000 could be used towards the shelter, what we're talking about this 20 by 30 building out there at the Tucker Sellers facility. And that's what we're talking about, correct?
Yeah, yeah. Something it would, it would be off the back end or something like that.
And, and with maybe some more donations coming in from the dog lovers of our community, like Mr. Beeler adding an extra couple bucks or me or, or Ms. Ripley or any of us dog lovers. Donating towards, towards a, a dog run. Um, I think, I think this is all doable. I think it's going to be a real publicity thing to get back out. To let people know that, yeah, we're still collecting money for the dog shelter.
And, and, and just in general, it, it just seems more and more that it's, it's going to take a village. You know, it's, it's like, we can't seem to ever do it all anymore.
Well, I'm just saying that there is some, some money there that was earmarked for that. The second thing I was just wondering about, you talked about using volunteers. I'm thinking if we could work with some of the local 4H groups that maybe are working in animals, small animals, like dogs, cats, uh, we don't doing cats, but certainly with the dogs, that would certainly be another way to get some volunteers out there. I mean, we have lots of kids who have lots of different kinds of, uh, desires to do things. So that might be a way we can go too, when we're talking about our Boys and Girls Club, uh, some different kinds of projects with them. So there's just thinking off the top here to kind of add to what you've already done. I'm very pleased with this. The one other thing too is, you know, reminding people if they would like to buy an extra bag of dog food. Are we feeding them over here at the vehicle, vehicle yard?
We aren't currently housing any dogs and we haven't for quite a while.
We don't have any dogs.
Right, right. But if we should be, is there a need or a place where we, people could donate dog food or blankets or, uh, things like that?
Not that we're operating at this time that I'm aware of, um, but it's something that we can do.
Certainly could be worked into the plan.
Yeah. Oh, yeah. Oh, oh, yeah.
Okay.
Ripley.
Can I ask Ms. Zabel if, uh, she has found the 10,000 yet? I had asked her a while before and, uh, she wasn't able to, uh, she hadn't found it yet.
She'd still be there. No, we haven't spent it on anything.
Well, there was no $10,000 earmarked in the fund balance.
From 2023?
It was at the reserve or set aside for that specific amount.
There, there should be. Do a little more digging to find it perhaps.
It, it would have come in in 24 because it was done at the end of 23, but I don't know if she found it or not.
Yeah. But we can keep an eye out for that.
Absolutely. And Mr. Mayor, this was for, I, I missed that. Was, was that a fundraiser of some sort?
So in the Festival of Trees in 2023, so that was December. We did, uh, one of, one of the projects that we were raising money for was an animal shelter in Sunnyside.
Gotcha.
And there were three different drawings that were presented and people got to vote on the one that they liked the most. And those drawings may be still available too. They were for a shelter here on, on, on police station campus here, but, the, the money, the money should be somewhere. I'm a little surprised that it, that it's not labeled in some funds somewhere that, that we have that available. And Council Frosty, you had a question?
Um, I, I did. I was just looking through the slides very quickly in the case I might have missed it up. But I remember speaking to, uh, Chief Layman at one point and, uh, when, um, Megan was still here. And, and I remember in the conversation, um, she had to have had a certain, uh, training to be able to file citations.
Yes. That, that's the training he's planning on sending them to in March.
Oh, okay.
So it's, it's at the Police Academy in Burien. That's the one he said. Correct me, Derek, but I don't know what's going to cost $5,000.
Three to five, somewhere between three to 5,000 total.
Oh, okay. Okay. And then, um, were we able to pull the number of how many citations we were given that were given out last year, either for lack of registration or if a dog was a stray or no, yeah. Do we have those numbers?
I can have it by next Monday.
Okay.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, I wanted to ask council this and, and kind of get it out there. I mean, one of the things I'm hearing from various stakeholders and residents are you guys should be more punitive with, with dog owners that let their dogs loose. The tricky part I'm learning from Chief Layman is you have to find who those people are. What is the temperature of the council is my question. How, how much should we penalize and, and what? And, and where are those measures? Cause, cause I do feel like we're not as strict as we need to be on the licensing part, number one. And again, tricky for code enforcement for our police officers. If a dog's running around, we pick it up and it's, it's not chipped. It doesn't have a collar with a name. You can't, you don't know who's it is. And oftentimes they're dumped. But if we do find a dog running around that's chipped and things like, what's the threshold for us to really be punitive? Not to make money, but to encourage people not to have their dogs running around. So any ideas you guys have, um, we're open to hearing them.
A lot of people these days are saying, keep them. I don't want them anymore.
Right.
There's such a pandemic of dumped duck animals that they, they'd rather get a new little puppy rather than pay a fine to keep their dog.
That's mean.
It is mean.
It's mean, but it's, it's life these days. I don't know what's, I follow the animal sites and, and it's horrible what's dumped out there, how people are treating their, their dogs. They're treating them like animals. You know, that they are not.
It's animal cruelty.
Yeah, it is, but to prove it, that's a different story.
Mr. Beeler.
Maybe we can do something on just repeat offenders. One, two, three strikes, you're out, something like that.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
So I think the fines are really low and I really think we, we should look at the fines and maybe even triple them, quadruple, whatever, whatever gets their attention. I would also like, uh, the city manager to explore ideas or maybe in ordinance to outlaw any breeding in the city of Sunnyside and any sales in the city of Sunnyside, if that's possible.
I can do that.
We can see if it's, if it's feasible to do that. Definitely need to talk about the, uh, the fees for, you know, letting your dog escape and not having it licensed, that sort of stuff. That hasn't been adjusted in years. And I think it's time we look at that. You know, we, we use the, the line that, you know, we have a low income community and so we don't want to punish our residents and, and, and that's not wrong. However, uh, we need to take the question of animal cruelty and animal abandonment seriously. When you adopt an animal, you adopt, you take responsibility for that animal and that is understood. And so the, the whole idea of, well, if I have to pay money to get it back, just let it go, or I'm tired of it, let's just turn it loose. Is completely unacceptable. Perhaps what we also need to do along with that is educate the public a little bit more. I know people are on social media all the time and, and by responses and comments I see on different social media pages that they are reading managers posts, they're reading the police chief's posts. And so maybe we also along with that need to, um, do some sort of public education. But yeah, I'd love to see no breeding allowed in, in city limits and, and that sort of thing. Ms. Ripley.
Yeah, I was just, uh, wondering why we need to certify two new officers for the, for the animal control. We only had one officer running the animal control last time. Why can't we have one code enforcer and one animal control? That way we wouldn't have to spend the money to certify two and.
Saves us about maybe five to $600 in the training.
Excuse me, could you speak up, sir?
I'm sorry. Yes. Um, the, you know, one, it's, it's not much of a cost savings. The biggest cost is the hotel. Really? The training's $500 each.
It was in the thousands.
No, that was total for both officers to be trained would be three to $5,000.
And wouldn't they both have to be trained?
Right. But the hotel room is going to be what the hotel room costs.
But why do we need two officers? Two?
Can I, can I answer that question?
Ms. Zabel, go ahead.
So we had three positions. We had two code enforcement officers and we had one animal control officer. So from the, uh, finance committee, along with finances, budget proposal to the council was to eliminate one code enforcement officer. Because the code, because the animal control officer resigned, we were able to keep both of our code and code enforcement officers. But they're going to be sharing that one person's responsibility. So we're not going to have two animal control officers. We're going to have two code enforcement officers who are also in addition, doing their regular jobs, adding animal control into that job.
Duties.
So the, the cost.
We have to certify both.
It, it costs a hundred thousand roughly for the animal control officer. We don't pay that anymore. Because we had three positions, now we only have two. So.
And we now also have the, I'm sorry, the ability. So when, when we had one animal control officer, if she was sick at training, um, or on vacation, we had no one covering. Now we have the ability to have, if one of our code enforcement officers is sick on vacation away at training, the other code enforcement officer will be there and can, and be able to. the other code enforcement officer will be there and can, and be able to provide service if animal control is needed.
That makes sense.
Thank you.
So it'll still be a net savings.
Yeah.
Yes. Here, Council Frost.
In regards to, to, to punishment and how punitive it may be, I, I, you know, I really do. And then going back to an initial conversation again I had with, with Chief Layman earlier last year. You know, there definitely has to be consequences for people's actions or inactions. And I think we need to set a precedent here that it hasn't been set ever, I believe. And I may be wrong, but I think there's a reason why people are not coming and registering their dogs. There's a reason why we have pet owners being negligent. We have, there's a reason why they're dumping in huge amounts out in the country. And there's breeding happening everywhere. That's really just adding to the problem. I think we really have to set a tone here and I agree with Deputy Mayor Galvan if that means increasing our fees. And if we're going to have two code enforcers that are going to be trained now. Talking about how the implementation around citing and how effective we can be along with the messaging of how important it is to register your dogs and be responsible pet owners, or not just dogs, but pet owners. Because there will be consequences and we are about to start really, you know, just nailing, you know, nailing it down and, and being a lot more. I don't know if it's the word strict, but definitely being a lot more on watch of what's going on in our community. I do also recall a conversation with, with the previous, he, his, his title was an ACO, but he worked for Prosser. I don't know if you've had a conversation. His name was Pablo.
And he was really good.
He was really good. And he spoke about, a lot about how, I mean, we, I'm not going to compare ourselves to Prosser. I know we're a lot bigger than Prosser. But how a lot of the issues really just started rescinding when they started enacting a lot of, a lot of these fees and citations and really being proactive and going out in community and, and really just, you know, just searching and looking around and seeing what's going on in terms of animal control. So I, I do think that we can get there. I do think that it's a problem that we can definitely probably resolve on, but I think we need to start somewhere.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, and, and one thing I am anxious to do is convene a meeting with animal stakeholders, if you will, animal lovers. And particularly I, I really want to meet with vets across the region or at least in the lower valley. And the, up to Yakima. So I, I, I feel like we have to have that conversation. I was hoping that, that a few folks would, would show up today. I know Ruby Medina is very passionate. I had invited her. I was hoping she would show. But, um, she was probably busy, but, but anyhow, I, I think we do need to hear from various voices. Cause this is a community issue and I feel like the vets have felt like we haven't communicated with them as effectively as we should. But hey, I, I, I think we're at the point, we need all hands on deck to help us out with this issue. Cause there's limited resources. And I think the other elephant in the room is, and this, you know, you hear varying things. That, should it be a kill shelter, you know, and I think, you know, people that love dogs and animals are like, oh my gosh, no way. And, but the issue that's happening is I think it's the economy. It's a lot of different factors. And then the fact that when you have adoption shelters, there's a glutten of dogs. People don't take them. It's just, it's just this effect that's just built and built and built and built. And we just find ourselves where we're at, where the result is a lot of dogs and cats that are running around town because people can't afford them. We can't afford as jurisdictions to manage these functions. The private sector hasn't stepped in and said, you know, this is a business model that works. If I had any money, I'd probably open a shelter that, you know, that, that cared for the dogs and was able to adopt them out. So it's definitely, I, I mean, I, I would say this is a crisis. I mean, it's an absolute crisis that we have going on. And I just, it's time again for, we need the community's help on this one because, you know, we government have not figured this out. Cause it's expensive, it's time consuming. It is, you know, the benevolent folks don't, you don't want to euthanize a dog. So I, honestly, I think we're at the point as government going, gosh, you know, help us out. Cause I want to come up with a solution.
Thank you, sir. And I think, yeah, this has been building over the last couple of years where the Humane Society stopped picking up animals in mid-contract. And so cities had to come up with a solution somewhere, somehow. We came up with a solution, wasn't our favorite one at the time. And it turned out, well, now, now she's left, she's no longer with us. So now we have to come up with a different solution. And so, yeah, it's, it's on us to come up with something. And again, it's going to come down to a partnership with members of the community. I don't think, as Derek said, I don't think this is something that we can do on our own. In fact, a lot of the big problems that are facing us right now are not things that we can solve on our own without community input. And the longer I've lived in Sunnyside, the more I run into talented and extremely creative, intelligent individuals. And I think that we need to rely on some of their input. I think they've got a lot to offer and I think one of the temptations is to not pay enough attention to what they have to say. You know, they may not have the exact answer, but they may have a grain of truth that brings us a little closer to the answer. So, and yeah, there have been people who've been on our backs about these issues for a long time. And we just have not come up with the correct and all solution to solve the problem. And so as the manager says, I think it's, it's something that we need to get community involved in itself.
And Mr. Mayor just received a text from Debbie Zabel and she said the revenue from 24 was $3,000 for animal licensing. So hasn't been a tremendous amount.
If I may, just two things on this topic. Number one, we have an ILA with Grandview that provides animal control services to them. I spoke with their police chief today. We're going to exercise our 30 day out. In that we're mutually agreeing to part ways because we're able to provide the service. And then the contract for the Humane Society will be coming to council next week.
Excellent.
Thank you.
All right. Further comments or questions on this item?
Here you go. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, gentlemen. Item G, strategic planning. Discuss strategic planning for the city of Sunnyside. Mr. City Manager.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. So this is something, um, some of these steps we've implemented and, and have been working on, but just wanted to have a, a pretty brief discussion and, and let you know some of my goals and, and see where that aligns with what council wants us to work on. So, uh, and Jackie printed out this, this page. It's a little, it's a little awkward because of the way I shaped it. But if you look at it, it's got project goal, the lead on the project. And then if you turn it over, um, the status of the project and the next step. So, you might have to get a little creative on, on how you look at this, but I'll, I've got my copy. So I'll just go through it really quickly. So one of the, the, the first things that I'd like to do is a 20 year strategic plan. We, we did go in front of, um, the, not the curb board, but Y C D A, the, the seed board the other day to receive some, some grant planning money for that. They actually encouraged us to go after some infrastructure money and to maybe pivot some in conversations with them. To go after a $2 million grant, perhaps for our well system or maybe the Munson property. So that kind of raised my eyebrows as whoa, that's, that could be a really good use. So I'm going to have to talk to Debbie when she gets back to see how we can perhaps fund the first phases of the strategic plan. But the good news is the same grant writer is working with us. So I think there's opportunity there. Uh, as you saw, you were working diligently on the pool plan, the community center rental plan. And, uh, so we'll continue to work diligently on those. If you go to number four, Springbrook Training, that's our new financial software. So that's something that, um, later this month, we are going to start, uh, group training for our directors and, you know, keep in mind that our directors haven't had access to their budgets in almost two years. Am I wrong? Am I overstating that or is it a year and a half or so? Yeah. So, um, and this is something that it's really almost impossible to run a city if your directors don't have access to their budgets. So commend these folks for, you know, for being patient and, but I think that's where a lot of growth is going to come from our directors when, you know, there being more hands on. Something that, uh, been talking to Chief Layman about a little bit as a police master plan and, and, you know, as he continues to develop as a, as a chief and, and this is something we're looking at. The Munson Property Plan. This is something, um, that we've been getting a lot of interest in the Munson Property recently. So Derek can attest to, um, word is on the street that it's available and there's a lot of interest in mixed use development and, and bringing retail and, and housing. So really crossing our fingers, we're diligently working on, um, kind of our own mockup and, 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 uh, what we've also been working on is, is our presentation. Uh, we met with a developer this morning and, um, you know how we're presenting that and marketing that property? Cause I, I feel like that does have a tremendous amount of opportunity there. Water system master plan, that's something that Raul's been working on in, in HLA. So I don't want to expound on that too much. Something that'll come before the council is a city marketing plan. So I'm working on that right now and, and Jackie's working on me with me on that. And the intent is, is to grab some of the LTAC money and put that in the city's control. So we can market the city in, in regards to tourism. Yeah. So, um, the LTAC board was pretty adamant that, you know, while Yakima Valley Tourism has been a great partner over the years. You know, perhaps the ROI wasn't what we expected. It was a lot of old school marketing and, you know, inside magazines and we were getting sort of, here's what you get as a boilerplate. You know, everyone knows I've got a media background and production background. So I, I really think, um, I really think if we had some of these LTAC dollars to market specific tourism functions, we could really help. And, and to sort of visualize that, what I'm thinking like for our events, we can market things like Cinco de Mayo beforehand with content. We could talk to people that are involved in the event. One of the other strategies we talked about today is leveraging Sunnyside for its strengths. So, you know, when I think of Sunnyside, we were talking about it with a marketing expert, like what, what makes you think of Sunnyside? Why would, why would somebody from Seattle or Spokane think about coming to Sunnyside? The first thing I think about is our great Mexican food. And, you know, from a tourism perspective, how do we, how do we market some of those assets and, you know, really focus on, on, on us being, um, really the Mexican food capital of the Pacific Northwest. And we were, we were talking about, you know, per capita, we probably have the most Mexican and Latino restaurants. And, and I, in my opinion, I've lived all across the country. And Phoenix, our, our Mexican food rivals anywhere in the country. It's, I mean, we really have some incredible food here. So that's my plug for anybody watching, come to Sunnyside. You, you will get the best Mexican food in the Pacific Northwest. Lobbying efforts were enhancing those. You, you know, we were able to use some funds out of the wa, the water fund specifically to, to go after some infrastructure dollars and, and, um, they've been working really hard going after a $1.7 million grants with, with the legislature. And, uh, you know, kudos to our new legislators. They're really battling for us and I've testified a couple of times, uh, in front of the legislature online. So, and that's something I'll encourage council to do. If you get the opportunity, the next time I'm asked, I'll, I'll definitely loop you into that because it'd be nice to have council members when we get that opportunity to go in front of, um, the legislature, working on animal control. Sunnyside Business Advisory Council, that, that has been really fruitful, I think. And then the other thing is a, is a homeless response plan. So, uh, wanted to let, let council know, and I put this in my report a couple of times is, is, uh, I was selected as the chair of the Yakima County Homeless Coalition. So they, I was honored to be nominated and I don't know if no one else was interested, but I threw my hat in the ring. But so the group selected me, which I felt great about. And I've talked, I've been talking to Councilor Hart about that quite a bit and her passion is the unhoused and, and helping in that space. So, um, I volunteered her to, you know, be my confidant in that. And, you know, hopefully we can, you know, uh, really make a dent in that. Cause I, a part of me throwing my hat in the ring, I, I felt like Sunnyside hasn't had a seat at the table in that conversation over the, over the years. And, you know, let's get to the table and, and see if we can bring some resources here and you know, see what we can do for the county. I know it's another bit of job work and whatever, but I'm willing to put the time in and, you know, see where, see what we do. Cause I, you know, I feel like our homeless population is growing and, and we don't have a ton of resources. So we gotta, we gotta figure out as a county how we do that. But those are really my, my 12 priorities and, you know, these, these flex and, and I think what I'm recognizing and I'm shifting some of these priorities, you know, on the fly as I think about, you know, some of the social issues and bringing Boys and Girls Club here and, and trying to really get the community to come together in that regard, you know, that's, that's kind of my organic strategy is bring the community together with the Business Advisory Council, with this Boys and Girls Club exploratory group. And just really keep pounding economic development. And I can say, one of the best compliments I got, or we got, I should say in Derek's group, not me, but chief put on our radar that, that somebody was really impressed how quickly, uh, one of our permits went through compared to the, the past. They said it would have taken months and Derek got it through and, you know.
Greg Vandegrift's trying to build a building on Midvale Road and he's trying to build a building on Sunnyside Mapton in the county. Identical buildings, ones in the city, ones in the county. He's been fighting the county for, he told me, I think six or seven months and he got a Sunnyside building permit in nine days, I believe it was, or seven days.
So that's, you know, kudos to Derek and, you know, I, I really think, you know, from mechanic, man, mechanical's point of view, I'm getting feedback from developers and people that have just come in, how much easier it already has been. And we certainly have, you know, we're, we're formulating our processes and getting the pre-op meetings better. But I think we're light years ahead of where we were even last year. So I feel good about the direction and, and I think, you know, it's going to start with economic development. Really getting builders in here to start swinging hammers and get, getting residential and get, getting retail. But, you know, the, also the other component, I really believe we gotta help these kids, you know, we got, we gotta keep them out of the gangs and we, we've got to get, keep them busy and, and, um, you know, it's going to take a village to do it. But, um, you know, so I think we're headed in the right direction. I'm, I'm really encouraged by 25. I know we had a tough budget season coming in. But, uh, I do also feel like the community is behind the council and, and, and there is hope in this community. That's what I love about Sunnyside is that we are really optimistic here that things can get better. And, and I do think things will get better.
Thank you, sir. Before I open it up for questions from council, I just want to express my gratitude for the work that you're doing. I would say in the last few months that you've been here, you have had a tremendous impact in the work that you've done in our community. Yes, you walked into a deplorable budget situation. And yet you, and you found people that would help you and you rose above that and you got us in a position where, okay, we're rebuilding. We're not in a great spot right now and probably won't be all year. But we are rebuilding. We're getting our feet back under us. And one of the things that I can say about the people of Sunnyside, you know, there's so many of people, residents of Sunnyside who have had their foundation kicked out from under them so many times over life that they know they can rebuild. They have not had the spirit kicked out of them. And this is a community that is, is, is going to jump in and, and help. Yes, there are the, those who are going to say, yes, it's, it's all your fault. Or mine, or somebody else's, but at the same time, they're also going to be willing to dig in and work. And so this is why I enjoy this community so much, why I've enjoyed my, my time in service so much. So I thank you for the work that you're doing. I know a lot of these things you and I have talked about in our meetings. And, um, and some of these I can see as an extension of several years of questions back and forth. For example, our involvement with Yakima Valley Tourism. That comes up for discussion almost every year with the LTAC funding. Do we really want to move forward with this? Is this something that we're getting our, our, a good return on? And it just continues to go back and forth. And so if there's a better way to do that, if we can feel we can get a better return on our investment, doing it in a different direction, I think council will support that. So yeah, I just want to express my gratitude for your vision on that. When I, you know, when you came in, you said you were a strategic planner and you are, you are showing that. So council, questions for the manager on any of these items?
I'm kind of speechless and that doesn't happen very often as most of you know. I think that any one of these, if we're able to, you know, you, you can't, you have it in a, a 20-year plan sort of situation with short-term goals in addition to long-term goals. And I think that that is really going to be the key. Having some short-term goals where we can show immediate progress and things like with the pool and things like with the rental of the community center. I mean, those are in the big scheme of things. They're, they're probably, I don't know how to say this without sounding sort of strange, but when, the sooner we can get a little bit of work moving ahead on that, it gives us, takes some of the pressure off to do some of the larger, more long-term things. And so I'm, I'm really pleased with this. I think we've got a, a great, great plan here to move ahead. So I appreciate your work on this.
And one, one thing I did want to talk about and, and get out there, I, and it really is in alliance with economic development and, and obviously what I've been doing is, is trying to figure out ways to solve, you know, so often it's easy to, to focus on the symptoms of, well, we don't have money or, or this or that. And sort of the reasons how we got there. And, you know, one of the things I've really been thinking about this new year is, okay, how would, how do we generate revenue to support city functions, essential functions and, and I have been having conversations with David Rand, who has the, the license for the marijuana shop and, and, you know, the, the, and I've gotten to know him and it was sort of, our conversation was born out of, you know, we took some money out of, it was a water sewer garbage issue and, you know, it was, it was on us. We, we took 11 commercial customers on a, they were large bills. And if you want to learn more about it, go to the blog. There's a lot, I don't want to get into all the details of why. But I started talking to Jennifer Southwick, who owns Sunnyside Meats, who is the daughter of David Rand. So all these conversations started organically and of course revenue is an issue. And, um, you know, we started to talk about, okay, the need for revenue and, you know, this is a legal drug and, you know, and, and gauge the council of what you'd like me to do in terms of, of this subject because A, you know, we need the revenue. B, hearing from community members, I feel like at least in the people I've talked with, there seems to be support for this because C, people, C, it's legal. D, people are going to Prosser and they're driving out of town or they're going to Yakima. So these are dollars that are leaving town. And I'm looking at a purely a city manager's business perspective. Take, take the emotion of whether you like marijuana or not out of the equation. So that's where we're at. So, so a lot, for me as the, the city manager that works for the community and the council, here is my idea. For me to go out and gather the facts of, you know, what, what revenue would it generate in the city? Have some community forums to re-gauge the temperature of the community. Go to Prosser, go to Yakima, go to Moxie, go to, I don't know where else it is, you know, and, and try cities, talk to some business owners. See what the, the, the effects of it has. Is there more crime around there? So, you know, really, really come at it from a factual perspective. And, you know, bring these elements back to the council and say, here's what I've found, council, here's what staff has found. Revisit it because one of the other feedbacks I'm getting from the community is, okay, city, you need to find every particular dollar that you can in your budget situation. So that, that, you know, I wanted to get some direction before I forgot about it because, you know, it's, it's, it's kind of been, it, it got sparked with a conversation with David, coupled with community conversation, coupled with our budget. So there's a lot of things that, that have just been coming before me in, in 25. So wanted to get some direction tonight. Would you like me to explore this? And, and Mayor, I'll, I'll let you, the councilwoman.
Go ahead, council.
I say yes. I say at this point, we can't say no to revenue and it's legal. And I think if we get all the paperwork on how much it's brought in and go from there.
Are there questions or comments? Mr. Beal.
It'd be nice if the chief got around to the other police officers and see, is there an epidemic right now? Are you catching people high, driving? Is there a problem? Is there crime around it? Are these stores getting robbed? Because in the beginning, they were getting robbed, especially in the King County, Pierce County. But that's diminished a, a ton. And the reason is, is banks are now accepting their money. Initially, they weren't, because in, banks weren't insured by the FDIC. They weren't able to put their money in a bank insured by the FDIC. So they were carrying cash only transactions. That has changed now. And so they're able to use banks. And so there's not cash on hand. I, I haven't seen an increase of marijuana use in Sunnyside from when it was legal to prior to it being legal, even to, you know, eight, nine years ago, when it was, 10 years ago when it was legalized. I've, I've talked to a couple of other chiefs where they allow marijuana, Union Gap and Moxie specifically, and both of them have said that they have seen no increase really in crime. My position on it is, I think that the marijuana is here. It's not like you have to drive to Seattle to get it. You could drive to Prosser. It's 10 minutes away. We're not stopping marijuana from being in Sunnyside because we're not selling it. We're just losing that on the revenue. I mean, that's, that's my position on that. If, we have a lot more problems with drunk people than we do people high in Sunnyside. There are people driving high. Very hard to detect. And I, I just read an article yesterday that there's, uh, they're trying to come up with some kind of a breathalyzer type test for marijuana. Because right now we have to take them in for a blood draw, but they're trying to come up with some kind of roadside impairment technique. They haven't yet. Well, there are some, I guess, but the reliability, they're not allowed in Washington. But that's, that's my two cents on it.
Further questions?
England came up with one that their officers use.
There, there is one and I've, I've been to two different presentations on it. And it is accepted in like 30 of the states, but Washington is not one of them right now. And it actually will detect cocaine and some other things in the system.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Deputy Mayor?
So thank you, City Manager Gonzalez and, and Chief Lehman. You know, throughout the years, I've heard different reasons why Sunnyside posts the weed store, right? One of the main reasons I keep hearing is to protect our youth from buying weed. Our youth is still buying weed from other, from, from, from local schools, you know, at the campuses, local parks. You know, so no, we, we are not protecting our youth. These, these weed stores, you know, they do not let youth buy marijuana. They, they have real strict policies. They do not let them in the store. So if we are to protect our youth, then let's shut down the alcohol stores because that's the real problem. If, if you really think about it. So, you know, I have no problem with it. It's regulated. It's overregulated and that's good. It's protecting the youth and, and it's not easy to go into a weed store. They ask you for an ID every five steps. I mean, you know, there's, there's more of an issue of alcohol and, and, and gangs and, you know, yeah, we want to, we want to protect our youths there. Maybe there's options, you know, that we could, we could explore there, but with weed, come on, I mean, it's, it's still in a community. Let's, let's, uh, let's face it, you know, it's, it's, it's still here and we're not, we're not getting the revenue that Sunnyside should be getting. So that's my opinion.
All right. And Mr. Broughton, you want to respond?
So I was the planner for the City of railway heights when this all became legalized. City of railway heights was one of the few communities that right from the get-go just went, yep, it is what it is. It's the law now and started in. When I left there, we had three stores and seven production processor facilities in a six and a quarter square mile city. The impact. Now, at that same time, right when the stores started opening up, there were a bunch of smashing grabs in Spokane and stuff. However, nobody got away. The security in these buildings is freak show. I had to write all the regulations and everything like that. So that's a path that you're going to go down. I, I have the experience to take us down that path if that's where we want to go. I also spent six years in Franklin County, which banned it. So I can go either way.
Ms. Frosta.
Yeah. And just to, to your point, uh, City Manager Gonzalez, um, I, I really love the approach about, um, uh, going out and getting facts and, and maybe talking to other communities, um, seeing what their experiences have been like because really there's nothing like combating misinformation or scapegoating of a substance like marijuana or fear mongering, um, like facts and data. I, I think one thing that we really have to worry about in our county right now is a fentanyl crisis. Now that's a crisis. Um, that's definitely taking a lot of lives. Um, if we talk about marijuana in the schools, a lot of it is laced with fentanyl. I mean, um, there, there are severe hard drugs out there that we really have to look at truly combating. Marijuana is, is, is not one of them. I, I also don't believe that it increases the youth, uh, the use amongst our youth. I, I agree with Deputy Mayor Galvan once again, and I, I, I do think that alcohol is probably a lot more of a risk factor within the schools. Um, and, um, and so, um, if we can go out and, and maybe try to get more of this information, um, debunk a lot of the misinformation that's already out there. A lot of it driven by emotion on, uh, from members and community. I, I do think that it's really going to provide them some concrete evidence so they can make more of informed decision of getting in line and supporting, um, the operations of a marijuana shop here in Sunnyside because we are losing our own revenue and I, and I really do believe that we are, now is the moment to bring this up in conversation, especially since we're scrambling for dollars at this given moment and moving on into 2025. I think it's an opportunity and I think we must seek it. And I think there's nothing like also engaging community along the way. So keeping them as engaged as, as, as we can, providing a presentation using social media platforms to communicate our findings to them. And, um, so I, I do agree with the approach and, and I am in favor for it opening. And obviously it's going to be a collective decision, majority decision here in council. But I, I support your lead forward.
Thank you. All right, Ms. Ripley.
You know, when you buy it from the store, you know that they regulate that so well that you aren't going to get like any fentanyl in there or anything.
Yeah.
And you buy it off the black market.
Yeah.
You can, you don't know what you're getting in it. And that's another plus for the stores is the growers have to regulate their stuff.
All right. Well, Ms. Hart.
Yes. One of the things too, I think we need to, to, you know, we start readdressing. Cause we have the opportunity to readdress, um, bringing the marijuana stores licensing back to the table and to the community. We have to go through the whole process again. Going through planning commission, if I understand correctly, uh, to make sure that there are places within the community where we're going to be able to locate. Um, so we'll have to do some public comment for that. And I think that what the city manager is suggesting as far as getting factual, getting non-anecdotal, because we got plenty of that going around, but to get the factual, uh, numbers on what we could possibly use this money for. Who's to say what, what we couldn't, what we could do for? I mean, it's, I, I just really think that, that we should take another look at it is what I think.
All right. Well, Mr. City Manager, it sounds as you have.
I have some direction and.
Some direction from council here. So.
And, uh, Mr. Mayor, if I may, like from a revenue standpoint, had a good conversation with David today. And then one thing he was willing to offer was, and I don't know what the correct terminology is, you'd break off a piece of, of your revenue and give it back to a city function of some sort. From a benevolent standpoint. So, you know, he's been very, uh, open about his willingness to donate to the community center or the pool or something of that, that gives back to the kids and things like that. So just putting it out there, food for thought and, um, and Derek and I have both kind of worked in this space and just wanted to let you know, I, I have, I did the same thing. Went on a fact finding mission for Pasco because we were in the same position and went out to Spokane and spent several days out there. And Spokane has like 40 pot shops and I didn't know what to expect. And I've met with their city council, met with their police chief. And it was really interesting. They said that, you know, and I remember this quote, he goes, the chief said, I, you know, we have more problems at the Circle K. And I'm not trying to take a position on this, but it was interesting. It was an interesting anecdote. And, you know, I was there as a journalist when all, all this came to fruition. And it was really fascinating to see. I thought to myself, wow, this is going to be a legal drug. This will never work. But, um, but yeah, and that's what they expressed to me was, you know, you never know what's going to happen from a safety standpoint, but at, at large, they, they said the marijuana shops were some of the quietest. And they have 40 and, and within city limits there in Spokane. But just an interesting anecdote I wanted to throw out there. I, you know, I would certainly take a very unbiased approach and, you know, just look at the facts and bring back what the council needed to know, like in terms of numbers and things like that. And I, I think we should have some community forums to get input on the pro and con side and, and, you know, get people on the record on how they feel. And that's how we approached it at Pasco. We did, I think we did two or three open community forums. Gave people the opportunity to speak. We had facts and then ultimately Pasco approved it. And, you know, it was a real tug of war in, in certain senses, but, but ultimately they approved it. And currently I believe there's two, uh, two pot shops open in Pasco. And to this point, I have not seen anybody rob them or anything. Knock on wood, that doesn't happen. But anyway, just putting it out there that I, you know, this isn't my first time looking into this issue and bringing back facts for the council and, and Derek's got a lot of experience and, you know, if we choose to go that way. But anyhow, but I'm looking forward to kind of finding out because I'm really interested for myself to figure out the impact that it's had on the valley and how some of our neighbors are doing with this and what the implications have been. So I'll work on that and I'm looking forward to it.
Thank you.
We will look forward to hearing your, uh, your report on this information and council will then move on from there. All right. And, and it may feel like I'm rushing things, but we've got 30 minutes to talk about the city council priorities. And knowing this council, I think that we can probably occupy much more than 30 minutes on this particular topic. So I want to give us some time to, uh, to at least get started talking about our priorities. I know last summer, council got together prior to making a decision on hiring a manager because we wanted to have before an incoming manager the desires of council so that our manager could come in and, and start right away, open up the binder and say, okay, this, this is what matters to council. And so Mr. Gonzalez was able to do that. And obviously he got distracted by other issues that were much bigger and, and required a hundred percent of his attention there for a while. But now we have an opportunity to revisit the, uh, the priorities that we have. What are we, what are we looking for as we move forward? Obviously the budget is going to be a continuing major priority issue for all of us. We have to be very conscious of what, uh, where our budget is and what we've spent and what we are spending and what is before us that we have we're obligated to. But there are still things that we can talk about and the manager has just, you know, wants to, wants to get started on that. He wants to know where we are and what our desires are. So I'm going to let him kick it off and go from there.
And obviously I just shared, you know, some of the things that we're working on and, and priorities and, you, you know, we have a revenue problem and so some of those things is, is that's where Derek and I are working on. How do we generate revenue? Where, where do we see the opportunities? I, I see the opportunity and, and, um, really creating better functions through his department, creating, um, retail and, and home opportunities. I mean, one thing we're discovering is we have a, a big population during the day, but a lot of those folks leave town. And, um, you know, one of the things that in our research is people are leaving Sunnyside. We have a lot of professionals that come in to work at the school district, to work at the hospital, to work at Sunny, the city of Sunnyside and all over the place, who have a lot of disposable income, who live in Grandview, who go out. who live in, uh, Grandview, who go out back out to Prosser, they live in Zilla, they live in Yakima. So the one strategy that we have is housing, you know, sort of mid, um, mid level housing, we're calling it. You know, that's one thing, the economic development element, the social element of the, the, you know, how do we keep our kids safe and, and busy and fruitful things? So those are kind of, um, really two, uh, high need areas that I see. But, you know, I also wanna focus on things council wants to focus on. Um, you know, I'm beating the bushes every day, th- those are two really high priority areas, obviously. But within the framework, any, anything that you'd like to see me working on that you don't see on this list is something, you, if you can communicate it now or we can talk offline as well.
All right, council members, I'd like to give you an opportunity to just, uh, share some of your thoughts. Um, and again, um, if your thoughts aren't fully developed and you just wanna sit and wait, um, obviously we meet regularly with the manager and I'm sure he'd be happy to hear them those meetings as well. But, um, I know we fed off of each other really well at our meeting last summer and I felt that we were very productive in that meeting. And so just give us an opportunity to, to share some thoughts, so.
Do we have that list, the one that we all worked, it would be a great ref-
It would be handy to have it in front of us, yes.
I think so too.
There we are.
I agree.
Is, is that it?
There it is.
There we are.
Thank you, Jackie.
All right, Jackie.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I think, you know, I, I absolutely agree, the things that we talked about, you know, let's take a look at what, what we maybe were able to get done, started on, where we, where we at with some of these things. We've talked about some of them tonight. Um, I think that, uh, just, just kinda revisiting them will be good for us and then some new things that maybe we're interested in doing. I think, I, I don't know, what do you guys think?
Yeah, I, I-
So go ahead, Ms. Frosta.
Yeah, um, and I, I'm trying to see if I already, uh, if I read it on there, but, um, and I know the port, uh, does, does a bunch of, uh, bringing in industry in, into the community, but maybe the diversification of industry, um, when we talk about, um, uh, workforce development, um, it, it, I'm hearing great news that the permitting process is, is, is getting a lot easier and hopefully that can attract a lot more developers to come in. But hopefully also businesses and in terms of job creations, um, I mean, we have a lot of, um, industry already here, um, uh, um, that's rooted in ag, um, or a lot of factories. Um, but maybe more of the diversification of it can, can really even retain our, our youth go off to college and, and hopefully wanting them to, you know, um, uh, or them wanting to come back into the community. There's, there's a reason why many of those youth that leave and go and, 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 and get a, a college degree somewhere else end up staying in those communities is because I feel like they don't have a sense of, um, of, of obtaining something here that, that they do elsewhere. So how could we really start with maybe the diversification of industry, the workforce development, the, the skill development? Um, uh, and that's probably a question too with partnership with the schools, but, um, to really retain our people. And they don't have to leave at the, at the end of, you know, and obviously that's housing as well. Um, but that's something that just comes in mind.
No, and you're absolutely right. I know, uh, for the longest time, um, for decades, people have been saying, what is Sunnyside's greatest export? And it's educated young people. And so, um, we have kind of seeded economic growth to the port because they've done so well at it in so many different areas. But that is not something that Sunnyside should stay away from. I think we have every right, every responsibility to bring in businesses that, um, go according to our, our model. The port is, you know, going to bring, bring in manufacturing or businesses that work for the port. They have a model that works well for them and they've done very well with it. But that doesn't mean that the city of Sunnyside cannot step up and encourage businesses to come and investigate. Uh, we can put some sort of information packet together and say, hey, this is what we have to offer. In fact, I think we probably have something in place. And so there's no reason why we can't do that and I would support that one hundred percent. Um, you know, Sunnyside is a great resource for, you know, all of central Washington and northern, central Oregon for agricultural supplies. Okay, that's great. What about other areas? You know, do we have the workforce that could bring in a technology based business? Could we support that? Could we supply employees for that? Um, what about other types of things? You know, we've seen some retail come in, we kinda struggle with that just a little bit. Problem is we've got too much access to the freeway, it's too quick and easy to get to Yakima and Tri-City. So, you know, why would we stay in town and go shopping? And that's cost our retailers quite a bit over the years. But you're absolutely right and I support that completely. Um, let's look at, you know, that's another task for community economic development. Ms. Hart.
One, one of the things too that we're talking through, you know, community development has to be, um, talking about creating that chamber of commerce. And we've been talking about that in the Community Economic Development Group Commission, about how do we go about creating one? There's some things that are going on in the community already. The Empowering Sisters is about, what, two hundred and some odd number of women who meet regularly? Maybe they don't all meet at the same time, but they do meet regularly to go over and they support each other and they talk about the various things that they're doing. I thinking, take that same kind of in synergy and put that into a, a chamber of commerce. And so that we get people who are out there who need help, bringing in business classes, bringing in things like how, how to set up your, your five year plan for your business. And that's what chambers are really good about, is helping people to network with those kind of educational things. I think one of the things to Sunnyside is, and it's true of every little small town and you go back to the, to the golden age of Sunnyside when every corner had a little ladies dress shop and next to that was a little hair salon and next to that was maybe a, a barber shop. Maybe next to that was where you got your Buster Bound shoes, which nobody remembers what Buster Bound shoes are. Um, but some of us do, some of us got to wear those shoes, yeah.
Wait, wait, now you gotta explain what those are.
Yeah, they're just really cool shoes for little kids. But the thing of it is, is that Sunnyside is going through that same thing now. We got a lot of coffee shops, man, we could have coffee different every day of the week and four or five times a day. Um, and they're not that coffees, I'm, I'm all for drinking coffee, but the same way with hair salons. And with, that's a, that's a skill that it's, that we have, we have, uh, schools, we have several academies that just teach that. It's a thing that, that young women wanna go into and young men as well. But we need to be offering more high tech kinds of things. Um, we don't really have a tech kind of, uh, workforce out there. And if we do, it's like, uh, the mayor said, they take off for some other, other seaports because they can't really get the money here if they could someplace else, working in high tech. But we still in Sunnyside, we have a need for high tech. I mean, I can't hardly operate my computer from one day to the next. Um, so we, how do, how do we go about that and, and, and get working? I think working with the schools is something that you said is, uh, is something that we need to con- get the schools to be working with us on the kinds of classes, uh, vocab and high tech classes that we need to be having in our community. Um, w- we gotta create more job opportunities for kids at a younger age so that they will take down those jobs at an older age. I think, you know, like the dog shelter, those people might be going into vet services. If, you know, if they volunteer at the vets, you know, they, at the, uh, dog shelter or at local veterinarian places. All of those kind of things create job, uh, dreams. And I think we need to work really hard at figuring out how to do that.
All right.
Sorry, a little long-winded.
Once we get, well, see, that's the thing is because we're all kinda passionate about these things. And we're gonna find that all of us has ideas that are developing as we talk. But we're all kinda passionate about some of these things that we see that we really wanna improve. I mean, this is what we were campaigning about when we were running for office, right? So, Mr. Beeler.
One thing I'd like to see, something that city manager and everybody here, seems like every four or six months, we get hit with this contract at ten, twenty, thirty years old that nobody's looked at. We get these forms or anything, anything in the books, twenty, thirty years. And then when they do come up, it's blown out of proportion and it's a big problem. And how could that not be looked at for ten, twenty, thirty years? I think we need to start looking at all our forms, all our files, all our contracts. If something's past twenty years old, somebody needs to physically look at it and then go past ten years old or something like that. Because we just, it's, it happened four or five times a year, we get hit with something. I'd like to see us look for those things. I don't know how it's gonna be, but that's why we have a city manager.
We can start, we can start looking into that. Well, and, and to speak to that, I, I know we've been talking to some outsourcing agencies and one individual in particular. So for instance, we've been talking about some of our codes and I've been talking to code enforcement about, we face an issue and Derek can speak to this, where, you know, you can get an administrative fine for, let's say, you know, you, you've got a bunch of garbage in front of your house, but, but we're finding that we have sort of like a roadblock from like punitive side, because it has to be, you have to have a certain authority to give tickets. So, I mean, there's all these kinda things that we can clean up in our coding and we really do need to go through a, a fine tooth comb, there, there's, there's no question about it. And I think we'd find ways to be more efficient and even, you know, our, our permit technician Debbie was telling us, and I can't quite remember, there's been so many things, but she recognized there was in the business licensing, licensing process. So it goes through the state, then it gets filtered through us and she believes that we should be collecting some revenue on, on our business licenses that we haven't been. You know, so, so these processes I'm discovering as I talk to, you know, varying people within the department, but we, we haven't had anybody like Derek here to, okay, deal with it. And all due respect to the former folks that have been here, I don't wanna discount their efforts, but we're cut, we're trying to take a strategic look at where we're missing and revenue in particular, where it's filtering through the cracks. Not taxing people, cause these are just general fees, you get a license, you know, we're not looking for like, how do we charge people more money? No, that's, but what is on the books, how are we more efficient? Am I, am I couching that up correctly?
Yeah, and, in, in addition, you know, we have glitches like things that are civil, that are criminal, criminal, civil, these types of things that back when the codes were written may have been right, but aren't now. Um, going through the entire code, I mean, at least my purview, um, line by line, and just going through the entire thing, looking at it. Um, because that builds efficiencies, consistency. Um, when we do piecemeal, often cause there are other effects within other sections of code throughout the city, may be impacted by that change, but it doesn't get updated. So, but the, the, there's a lot of that stuff that we can do and that's what we are doing. That's a big push that I am doing this year. That's one of my office priorities is try to get a zoning code update moving through in conjunction with the comp plan update, because those two things should really be synced together.
So every few years, um, there's a big push to update our SMCs and our schedules and that sort of stuff. And it's, and it starts, but there's always something that comes up that, that stops it and it doesn't start again. And so I think it's wise that we bring this up because it needs to start again. Um, we have to keep our SMCs and our contracts and everything up to date. I remember the big one was got all of our fee schedules on one, one section, so we could find all of our fees in one spot and we weren't searching all over the code for it. Um, so that really improved things. So we need to continue this, this is absolutely a, a, an important step and it makes our lives easier and it makes the lives of the community easier because they can research and, and have that information at hand a whole lot quicker too. So, yeah, that's a good one. Others?
Yeah, I'll go.
Ms. Foskett.
So I really like the Sunnyside Business Advisory Council. I like all the efforts and all the times that you guys have met. That's always been something that's been really big in my heart is to get the business owners all together and for them to feel a connection with the city and knowing that the city does care and is listening to them. And another thing, I'm not sure if you guys have discussed it, cause I did miss the last meeting that you guys all gathered. Um, but even hosting one all in Spanish, where, I don't know if you guys brought that up.
It has been brought up and I would like to do that and I'm glad you reminded me of that because that is something that I've been wanting to do and, uh, making sure that, that we have that resource. So, um, we have those scheduled for the second, I wanna say second Wednesday of each month. So we can definitely make the Spanish version, maybe the second Thursday, wha- whatever we decide. But, you know, you, you know, I'm the greatest Spanglish speaker in history. No recuerdo, you know, cierto palabras, you know, I forget. But, um, you know, my Spanish is good, but I, I would definitely need your guys' support because, you know, like I said, I'm, I'm a really good Spanglish speaker and I'm probably better than I lead on. So, you know, I just say when people talk trash, I know what's up, so, you know. It's just my little secreto, so, you know.
All right, well, yes, just wanted to remind you on that because I-
No, that's a great idea.
I've, I've seen a lot of the business owners or like the same business owners, which is really good and that should keep going. But I believe we also have a lot more business owners who are still left out and we should, um, bring around that circle and close that.
Absolutely, I think that's a great idea and, and would love to work with, um, our Spanish speaking counselors on that. Cause I, I really think that would be a great, great thing. Um, cause, you know, I think there's that hesitancy when you're, you know, you're not proficient at a language and you get nervous and, you know, I, I always joke when I'm speaking to my Spanish speaking friends, I get nervous like you get nervous when I start, I go, oh my God, I know exactly what you're saying, but sometimes my words come out in the wrong tense. So anyway, but, you know, so I really empathize with our, um, monolingual, uh, business owners. So yeah, let's work on that, I'm actually super excited to, to reach those folks.
You know, one of the things I've, I've, I've discovered too is that they really wanna know. And they wanna be able to do their business correctly and they wanna be able to be a part of the community. So I'm, that's another reason why I'm really excited about the, 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 uh, business, uh, advisory groups because that just, I've just seen so much enthusiasm there, just coming out of the walls, it's great.
Other items?
Yep, it's been great.
They'll come up.
They'll come up.
It'll come up, we'll get it. I think we should look at our priorities every now and then. I mean, we, we had, what, when was this, in July we looked at it?
It was, um,
Maybe around there? Yeah, it was definitely, well, before.
It was before, before, yeah.
Yeah, no, it was, it was July, I think it may have been June, but.
But maybe every, maybe, maybe quarterly we ought to take another look at it. I mean, we're so busy dealing with our day to day and our week to week and month to month. But maybe every, maybe quarterly we ought to take another look at what our priorities are and see, are we making, are we making headway on those priorities? I think that would be helpful.
I agree with that, I mean, just looking back at that, that list, um, there was communications up on there as well. And I think we've definitely been improving on that. And so kudos to the city manager for leading those efforts, um, in both English and Spanish. Um, and, um, and, and I know we've spoken about potential town halls, um, and it's probably that amazing if we would, could, you know, get, get some, you know, want a few of those this year, if not a couple, at least, um, throughout the year. Um, and I don't know if they've happened in the past, um, from conversation, it doesn't seem like maybe they have.
We've had forums, but I don't think that-
Forums, yeah, like, yeah, or like State of the City address, I think we've been calling it or something like that, but-
Well, that, that's a different thing and I, I wanna talk about that in a little bit too, so.
And one, one thing, um, when I was at Franklin County and the administrator there, we, we came together um, with a gentleman named Paul Casey and, and we worked on our mission vision values and, and I can tell you bring in a county together for that, I mean, it was like, it was a pretty big accomplishment and Derek can attest to that. And, um, you know, a county's like a bunch of frenemies together and, um, getting them to work together. It's, especially in Franklin County, I'll, I'll say that for sure. Um, but, you know, a great group of people that came together despite our differences and, but point being, you know, it's a small, it, it's a small investment to bring somebody in like that who really can facilitate and get a lot out of the, it's a full day, you'd have to go a full day. But I'll say it, it was well worth the investment. We came out with mission vision values that still stand in the courthouse today, which I'm very proud of. Um, but just putting it out there as if that would be something that would, that would be of interest. And, um,
I think so.
Yeah.
It was really, you know, and, and we noticed it and, and, uh, the public was welcome to come. We didn't know buddy from the public came, but it was really interesting and, and we all came together and, and we all came together and and just really had our input and I would envision you guys leading it, directors being there and, you know, really kind of, it really, you know, it brings us closer than it, we can articulate. Because I think it's time that that we do a new mission vision values because I don't think it's been updated in many years here. And then we we can also talk about our priorities. So it's something I've been just reaching out to Paul. Just kind of wish me, how how's things going? And so anyway, putting it out there.
Yeah, very, very quickly, can I answer it in less than a minute? Another one. Um, I I I don't remember seeing this and maybe it's already on there, but collaboration, so community collaboration. And what I mean by that is, um, I think it would be amazing if we can really start um strengthening our collaboration with our school districts um, in our community. Um, there was, um, there's this like really cool program that the city of Vancouver um, along with the school district, uh, put on and that's like gathering high school students and then bringing them into city hall and allowing them to really come and like really get the city governance experience to really demystify like the operations of city of 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 city hall and then and the governance overall. Um, and then they, you know, you'd invite them into chambers and then they get to come and like kind of sit in the chairs and really get to engage with their city council members, the mayor, deputy mayor, and this kid city manager as well. Um, so it's like, it was, and and I saw them, like, it's a certificate program. So at the end of like maybe the two days, they end up getting a certificate program. So it's a really cool way of also getting youth engaged and um and strengthening collaboration with civic engagement and then strengthening strengthening collaboration with our their school district.
As a former high school teacher, I would be a hundred percent in favor of that.
That'd be kind of cool. I know I saw that. I was like, oh, my gosh, that's like really cool. Like, how could we bring it to Sunnyside?
Bring our own civic class.
Yeah, allowing them to make that gabble over there and.
In response to your comments of collaboration, I know at one time the city manager, the superintendent of school, the port, and I believe the director of the hospital got together regularly um, to, because they were the major stakeholders, the major employers in the city, and so they got together and met regularly to to work together. Well, after um, things happened with the hospital and all that, that sort of fell apart. And so
Time to reinstitute.
And now it's time to get that going again. I think that with the manager in place and, you know, the school superintendent and whoever is uh, tapped to replace Jay Hester at the port, at the port, it'd be really good to get a working relationship going again between those three. And then I don't know where the hospital would fall on that at this stage of the game with them. They've kind of been keeping their heads down the last couple of years, so.
We have had one of those meetings, Mayor.
Okay, excellent.
Early, it was late, probably November, and it was, it was a good meeting, but I I agree. We do need to keep those going because it was a really good meeting and I'll say, um, you know, I have engaged the school district to go to this January twenty-eighth meeting. Because I do believe, you know, the school district, not to call them out, I I think they need to step up and so does the city, though, you know, like I'm calling myself out. You know, I think we all we all need to step up.
Directly at the camera, Mike.
We are, you know what, I, you know, we all need to step up and and, you know, I I think they're ready to meet the challenge because people are challenging us to step up and, you know, I think the school district is, they are the linchpin to this community, you know, so. Uh, and I really think that they have a wonderful opportunity and I have no doubt they'll be collaborative in the process.
Oh, I I have no doubt either, don't so.
And really quick, just I, because I agree completely with Counselor Frost, so I actually wrote down on my notes um, a goal of mine would be to create some type of recognition or or an incentive to our youth for them to volunteer and for us to help them bridge that gap because, to be honest, I have a lot of youth who will message or snap me. They'll snap me and they'll say, Karen, I need community service hours. Where do I get them? And I'm always telling them, go here, go there. And it's an overwhelming amount where it'd be nice for the youth to feel that they can go directly to the city to ask and to get that.
So what we'll do, Mayor, um, uh, we'll reach out to Vancouver and kind of get some more information, figure out how they're working that. And um, I'll talk to Ryan over at the school district too.
I know the person I can get you.
Okay, yeah, can you give me that? Because I I do think you guys are an inspiration to a lot of kids, you know, I mean, it's, they aspire to be council people. I don't think they aspire to be a city manager, but um, but but maybe they do, but you know, I think, um, you know, especially our Latino youth.
I know my aspirations work in reverse as well. I aspire to be a high school student. So, um.
Mayor, are we revising this list with and adding everything that you discussed today?
Okay.
Our question.
Yes, that would be, Counselor, you're in favor of that if she adds and revises the list as we go? Okay, thank you, yes.
Mr. Mayor, one thing that you were doing, we were actually doing in the beginning, well, actually, because you were giving out the mayor's coin, you were, or yeah, I think it was a mayor's, but we were um recognizing a lot of the the student athletes in the beginning.
They are brought before me, I, you know, and when I don't know that it's happening, it's really hard to recognize, but I am absolutely happy to do that.
Back up and then maybe like
It was the wrestlers.
Because usually it's like, yeah, coaches I will reach out. I remember in the beginning they were reaching out. Um, but not just limited to just athletes. I mean, we got the science club out there doing really cool things.
We've got some talent in scholar. Yes, absolutely.
You know, scholarship recipients, it'd be really cool, really get the youth in here.
We also have the um Spirit of Sunnyside Awards and you can nominate youth and they get a mayor's coin and recognition there. There's different categories.
When is that to come?
Um, I think it's April twenty, I I can't remember the date right now, but I will find out and I'll message everybody.
Okay, please, thank you.
I was wondering if we were going to do one this year.
So, uh, one of the things that was brought up a year ago, probably March, um, was a State of the City address. It's not something that had ever been done in Sunnyside before, so um, you know, to be quite honest, I didn't know how to go about doing it. And so I don't know, does counsel want the manager to put together a State of the City address and just publicly send that out? Um, like on the Facebook page or do you want the mayor to do that? What is the desire of counsel on something like that?
I I kind of think, you know, that the mayor, you know, being the the leader of the the council as a whole, because you bring it all together, bring all of our thoughts together and and I think that that would be the way that to handle that. I know Mike has been doing an off, a lot of stuff and he's doing his blog and he's doing all those different things, but I think as a council, I think we should, we should have that too. I mean, um, so I would think it would come from the mayor.
Okay.
But as a council of the whole, you know, you being the chair.
Okay.
That's just my.
Other thoughts? If everybody would like to see it come from the mayor, I'm certainly happy to start working to put that together.
Or would it be like a video?
It could be whatever counsel desires. It could be a video, it could be something written out on Facebook, whatever people prefer.
You know, one of the thoughts, just thinking now, I'm just thinking spitballing here, you know, when we do the Spirit of Sunnyside, the mayor, the mayor has a opportunity to say something wonderful about the community. That might be a great place to be able to to present that because you got a captured audience there of all those people who are there to eat and and celebrate the people who are the award winners and.
If we were going to do that there, then I would want it, you know, I don't like to be videotaped, but at the same time, I want it to be on video and then put on the Facebook or the city webpage or something like that because we're going to get two hundred people there and we're seventeen thousand.
Isn't it normal?
I'm I'm just throwing numbers out there, but we're not, as a percentage of the population, it's not going to be a huge number. And so I'd like it to get out.
You know, it's covered by the paper. And uh, I think that it'd be a good place to start.
But if counsel wants me to do that as mayor, then I'm more than happy to start working on that, Ms. Frost.
You know, you know what would be cool too is maybe leading up to the release, or I don't know if it'd be a live, uh, maybe like asking the community to submit questions for that day and then you can ask them. I I I know that the the ma- the mayor of Granger did a live and it was just her on on the video. I'm, I don't know if if y'all want to do a collaboration, whatever works, but you know, yeah.
Want the questions in advance because I know the people in Sunnyside well enough to know that they would ask questions I would not be able to think of off the top of my head and I'd be standing like a fish out of water gasping.
Maybe y'all do kind of like a podcast, like, you know, maybe both of you are like sitting down and then they're all like just kind of having, engaging in a conversation.
Would you be able to work?
I've seen that, it's kind of, you know, in the age of podcasting, in the age of podcasting, it's kind of cool, no? Like, and then y'all can have like a background or something.
And that's, that's something we've actually talked about with Deputy Mayor Galban and maybe incorporating a podcast of some sort.
Get him in there too.
I know.
Where are you?
I know he was, I think he was pressing, he had the idea for you to be the host.
Me?
But I've got the broadcasting background, so you know, I'm voluntold, but you you know, that that is another opportunity. I know we I would like to start reinstituting our our coffees with a counselor. I think those were received pretty well. Um, you know, maybe when it warms up a little bit to people, I think in this extreme cold, they might have a little bit of a issue getting up early, but um. Yes, maybe wait till March is what I was thinking with those, but a podcast is something we have been thinking about because I, you know, it would be five, ten-minute conversation where I'd ask you questions about different things and
That'd be cool, yeah.
Yeah, you know, everybody's, you know, podcasting is is really a hot topic thing right now. Everybody loves it.
There's Sunnyside's niche.
Yeah, I was, I was thinking about calling it the sunnier side, the sunnier, you know.
That's actually a good one.
So we'll get to work on something like that and I like the April date because it corresponds with the Spirit of Sunnyside Awards, but definitely have to do some preparation in March for that and get that together. Yeah, be absolutely happy to do that. Like, like I said, it was not something that was in my experience previously on council and so I just kind of sat back and didn't really know where to take it because it's something you have to be prepared for, you know, just sit down and give a State of the City address a minute. And so I want to, uh, if I'm going to do it, I want to do it well. I don't have any concerns about the manager if he's going to do it because he will do it well. Uh, but I want to make sure that I do a quality job of it if I'm going to be the one doing it, so. All right, further, okay, we're we're one minute over the time, but I don't think there's any crisis systems in the regular meeting. Is there anything else that needs to be brought up on this topic? Continue to think about it though, counsel. Um, if you have ideas, you know, can bring it up to the manager when you meet with him, you can bring it up at a council meeting, something that you think is important during your time to report and continue to work on our goals and our priorities and continue to move the city of Sunnyside forward. I think we've had a very good meeting tonight.
Yeah.
And I thank you all for that. If there's no other business to come before counsel, if there's no objection, we are adjourned. Thank you very much, everybody.